Yes, I know it's a regular council meeting, but we're having a study session.
Okay.
Proud Mary. Like to call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, August 1st. And this is a special study session on the state of cannabis. If we could please have the roll call.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temmelson.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Thank you.
And did you want to make the introduction?
Yes, I do. Today, we have Mark Tran from our Ontario office. Mark specializes in the regulation of marijuana, both in terms of cities' ability to ban marijuana and also allow marijuana. He, together with Victor Ponto, are our marijuana task force. Victor was supposed to be here, but he tore an ACL and he's in a body cast. So Mark is ably stepping up. His presentation, we've allotted two hours for this. His presentation, if uninterrupted, is about forty-five to fifty minutes. And then we thought we'd go through that and then have questions afterwards. We're going to cover a lot of material, from federal law to state law, to what other jurisdictions, what other states have done, what their experience, what cities can do. We're going to give you a whole menu of options for the city. And then it's up to you, with public input, to give us direction. We have cities that have completely banned marijuana. And we have, our newest city is Atalanta, which is, that's where the marijuana is basically grown, in California. And so, we cover the gamut from the cities that we represent, and we'll bring that perspective to you. So without further ado, Mark, take it away.
Thanks, Scott. As Scott mentioned, I'm here to present on the state of cannabis. Federal regulations, all the way down to what cities can and cannot do to regulate cannabis. Unfortunately, I did not bring any samples today, so bear with me. Okay. Let's see here. August 1st. Okay, so a brief overview of what I'll be discussing today. I'm going to start with the federal prohibition and federal jurisdiction. Include a summary of stories about legalization from Colorado. A brief review of the current law in Avalon. And then move into how the city can regulate commercial cannabis under Senate Bill 94. And this includes permitting and/or land use ordinance. And some parts of that would include cannabis delivery services or cannabis cultivation. Another big component of regulating cannabis on a local level is taxation and revenue. And then move into next steps. So, starting with the federal law concerns here. Under federal law, cannabis is categorized as a controlled substance, Schedule I controlled substance. And therefore, the cultivation, manufacture, possession, and transport of cannabis remains illegal under federal law. So, that hasn't changed. And, so for many other cities in California, they're able to avoid the conflict between state law and federal law by staying entirely within their, the state boundaries. The city of Avalon faces an interesting conflict because it is located on an island, Catalina Island, surrounded by federal waters. So just a brief discussion of the conflict between federal law and California law, and how the state boundaries defined. On the federal side, California's territorial boundaries extend three nautical miles from the coast and include a three-mile-wide band around any islands laying off the coast, but exclude any waters between the islands and the coast. State law, however, says that the territorial boundaries extend three nautical miles beyond the outmost islands and includes all waters between the islands and the coast. The distance between Catalina Island and the mainland coast is approximately thirty miles. So, under the federal definition, there's a band of water approximately twenty-four miles wide between the coast and the state. That would not be included in California's territorial boundary. And any transportation of cannabis from the mainland to the island would trigger federal law concerns. And here's a map that, if you look at the yellow squiggle that looks like a line of mustard, I was probably hungry when I made this. That's the twenty-four-mile-wide band of water that triggers federal concerns. And, so setting aside the issue of how cannabis gets onto the island for a sec, I'm going to move into discussion of what happened in Colorado. Hang on, looks like I'm having a technical difficulty here.
Can we get you some help if it doesn't work?
Okay. Wait, hang on. There we go. Just had to wait a bit. Okay, so Colorado. Colorado legalized recreational use of cannabis in January 2014. And it's often held out as a state that's ahead of the curve and used to forecast trends, again, because they were early adopters and were able to legalize in 2014. Now, since legalization, there have been mixed reviews about the results. I'm going to be discussing issues with drugs driving and revenue, kind of comparing the pros and cons of legalization of recreational use. Starting with the drugs driving, there's been an increase in users driving under the influence. In 2016, more than seventeen percent of all DUI arrests involved cannabis. And according to a 2016 survey conducted by the Colorado Department of Transportation, fifty-five percent of cannabis users said that they believed it was safe to drive under the influence of cannabis. This, of course, leads to an increase in costs of enforcement, things like additional DUI checkpoints and police costs, things like that. So, this is a chart that maps out the fatalities linked to cannabinoid-positive drivers. And the 2013 stats were in blue, going all the way up to 2016 in that kind of gold color. It appears that it's increased over time. And as the note at the bottom mentions, alcohol or other drugs may be present. So this could be, you know, it might not be cannabis alone, it could be that users are mixing substances and then proceeding to drive. So, this pie chart here discusses the kind of overlap that I previously mentioned. The blue is cannabinoids only, and then the gray is a combination with another drug, and the orange color is a mix with alcohol. So, those are the stats on drug driving, which, you know, I understand that Avalon doesn't have very many cars here, but the use of golf carts, similar issues with impaired driving might be present. Moving on to revenue. In a report dated July 19, 2017, cited the Colorado Department of Revenue Statistics, Colorado has exceeded $500 million in cannabis revenue since legalization. So, between January 2014 and July 2017, 500 million in revenue. This is a breakdown of the revenue. One of the highlights of this is if you look at the little orange band in the graph there, that represents the medical sales taxes, which are kind of a smaller portion, even if combined with the medical-related license and application fees in green, they make up a smaller portion of Colorado's revenue received. And the next bit here is about how these funds are being used. There's a similar breakdown in California under SB 94 that provides a certain percentage to research, substance abuse, things like that. And also money towards the criminal justice and public safety concerns to address those issues. So, moving on, moving away from Colorado and back into Avalon here with the current law. So, currently in Avalon, medical cannabis dispensaries are prohibited. Mobile medical cannabis dispensaries are also prohibited. Delivery services, similarly prohibited, and cannabis cultivation is also prohibited. So, it's the current law in Avalon. And then, assuming this is something that the council would like to regulate, these are the options for regulation. Starting with a quick overview of Senate Bill 94. So, prior to SB 94, there were two separate regulatory schemes. One was the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, MACURSA, and the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, ALMA. In June 2017, Governor Brown signed SB 94 into law and created a single regulatory scheme that addresses both medical cannabis and recreational cannabis, known as the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, or MALCURSA. So, it collapses the two separate regulatory schemes into one, which simplifies it and also reduces the conflicts that previously existed. What SB 94 retained was local control over cannabis regulation. So, just a brief overview of what cities can do. Cities can ban all commercial cannabis activity, including commercial delivery, commercial cultivation, commercial manufacturing, commercial testing, and commercial dispensaries or recreational retailers. Cities can also allow commercial cultivation with a local tax imposed on growth. Cities can allow retailers with zoning limitations on location or number, or a local tax on retail sales. One part in determining whether this is something that the council would like to look into is perhaps some community research and outreach efforts. This would involve determining local health and safety priorities, taxation rate, engaging stakeholders in the community, law enforcement, finance, planning, and potentially a community-wide survey, which could happen via mail or by phone. So, with the health and safety regulations, the basic ordinance structure includes the purpose and intent behind the ordinance, also definitions. Usually, the definitions will trace the state regulations, there's not much wiggle room for that, and we want to track the state's regulations as closely as possible. For example, we don't want to have a different definition of cannabis where, you know, the city includes industrial hemp, but the state regulations don't. Also, it would set up a permitting scheme, potentially operating requirements, penalties for violating, for example, operating a business without obtaining a permit or some sort of license from the city beforehand, and then also a severability clause. So, the selection process, the city has some discretion in the selection process, but it cannot have an arbitrary selection process. What we've seen elsewhere is some cities will grant priority status for some applicants. For example, the city of Oakland prioritizes residents, requiring that applicants have residency in the city for no less than two years and maintain no less than a fifty percent interest in the business. So this stops people from other communities, investors from other communities, moving into the city of Oakland to set up shop. One thing that SB 94 did change on the state level is that it removed the state residency requirement. So you do not have to be a resident of California to operate a commercial cannabis business. Another selection system is the point system. Berkeley, Long Beach, and Richmond, as well as some other cities, use a point system to prioritize some applicants over others. So this is almost a subset or a way of setting priority, similar to the second bullet point up there. So, points are allotted based on site suitability. For example, if you're operating in this portion of the industrial zone, you know, we deem that to be a better use of that land as opposed to this other area. Also, suitability of operations, experience, for example, if you're working with a, an owner that has set up businesses in other areas and seems to have complied with all the state regs and is, prioritizes health and safety concerns, that's something that would be awarded more points based on some systems that these cities have adopted. And other factors can be allotted points as well. So, moving into more specific ordinances, as to ordinance pertaining to cannabis delivery services here. So as discussed earlier, there are restrictions on the transportation of cannabis from the mainland to the island. Therefore, any cannabis-related businesses must be contained on the island itself. With that said, if the cultivation, manufacture of cannabis is contained on the island itself, the city could also permit the operation of delivery services. So, zooming out for a moment, this would require that the cultivation, the testing, the retail, and the distribution of cannabis occur on the island before deliveries could take place. And a point of clarification about the definition of what's a distributor versus a delivery service, a distributor is someone who sells, or purchases, or delivers cannabis between licensees. So, folks with a state license, let's say, from a cultivator to a testing facility, they would need a distributor to move between them. Delivery services are direct to the consumer. So, that's how those two terms differ. Also, another note about delivery services here, only three types of licensees under the state regs can provide delivery services, and those are retailers, microbusinesses, and nonprofit licenses. The latter two haven't been set up by the state yet, and they've kind of put a future deadline for coming up with whether that's feasible or not. Moving on to cultivation. So, four aspects of implementing commercial cannabis regulations, community research and outreach, planning, to need a health and safety ordinance. Third issue would be taxation and revenue, which would require a ballot measure. Number four, monitoring and compliance, this would be defined by the ordinance. For example, once, if and once a permit is issued, the city would want to have some oversight regarding whether this particular permittee is complying with regulations, conditions of use, things like that. One option for regulating commercial cultivation would be to create a permitting scheme. This option does not authorize cultivation in any particular zone. Rather, regulatory permits must be issued in conjunction with a land use permit. So, and this is where it could be limited to an industrial zone or an agricultural zone, something like that. But by merely adopting a permitting scheme, that doesn't create a right for business owners and would-be operatives to come in and set up operations. Okay. So, and there's two, generally two approaches to this. One limits discretion, and it's kind of a rubber-stamp process where approval can occur at a state level, and you have a checklist, and an applicant can go through and say, okay, I've submitted a floor plan, a security plan, I have insurance, I have a bond in X amount, and it's a check-the-boxes kind of process, that's no secret review, not subject to appeal either. And on the other side of that spectrum, there's a more discretionary process where it would require Planning Commission approval, conditions can be imposed on a case-by-case basis, secret review would be required, and then an appeal of that would go to the city council. Some more things that the city can require, the city can require applicants to submit to a background check, submit a comprehensive security plan, hold all necessary state licenses, agree to defend and indemnify the city, maintain a point-of-sale system tracking cannabis, and also maintain a community relations contact. In order to address security concerns, the city may require applicants to submit a security plan, as previously mentioned. The security plan in turn should include the following items: restricted entrances to any areas containing cannabis, locked doors or security personnel to maintain oversight of the area, security cameras recording all entrances, secured areas and parking areas, security alarms, licensed security guard during operating hours, plan for performing background checks, and a description of all delivery routes. So, regulatory permits are not transferable, so in the event that one is issued to a particular applicant, that applicant can't quote-unquote "flip" the license or permit or anything like that and sell it to somebody else. If somebody decides to take over the business, that person would have to apply anew. And with a land use regulation, on the other hand, that would run with the land. And there's a separate regulatory component that enables the city to regulate any new operators. The city council can set limitations on the number of permits. This is something that we've seen with other cities. The council will decide on the front end and say, you know, it looks like our city can accommodate three permits, so we're going to only issue three, or thirteen permits, or whatever the number is. Moving on to the land use ordinance. Land use ordinance serves three purposes. One establishes the location for a cultivation business. Two contains standards for site development. And three creates a process for project approval. One question related to this is where may cultivation facilities be located? Many cities require that cultivation facilities be within industrial zones. And some other considerations under state law, for example, there's one requirement that a cannabis facility cannot be within six hundred feet of a school. So, restrictions on the state level would have to be considered as well. So, before the passage of such an ordinance, there has to be a noticed public hearing before the Planning Commission and a noticed public hearing before the city council. And any final ordinance must be consistent with zoning, and the general plan must also comply with CEQA. A big issue with land use ordinance is water availability. So, the cultivators must show that they have obtained sufficient water. We've requested in some cities that the cultivators work with their utility, their water provider, and in this case, it would be Edison, to obtain a will-serv letter, wherein Edison says, we've talked to this applicant who intends to have a 10,000-square-foot cultivation facility, and we have enough water, and we've reached an agreement about the rates and things like that that we'll be charging. And another piece to note here is that the city retains the right to make a separate determination regarding the availability of water under its police power and the authority to regulate water conservation. In addition to water availability, there might be other impacts on other types of utilities, electricity and things like that. Moving on to taxation and revenue. So, revenue can be tied into a conditional use permit conditions, business license fees or permitting fees, things like that. And if a commercial use is allowed, it can be taxed. So, that would come in the form of a sales tax or a cultivation tax. And taxation of these uses comes with increased costs associated with licensing of businesses, regulation of various uses, enforcement of regulations, tax collection, and auditing. That the city of Sacramento, when they adopted their taxation and revenue scheme, they included fifteen pages or so of the additional staff that they would have to hire to process applications and maintain oversight of the businesses. Moving into excise taxes, sales, and use taxes, so more taxation. So, all taxes are either property taxes or excise taxes. Property tax is a tax on the ownership of real or personal property, which is triggered by the mere ownership of property. So, a tax on, an excise tax, on the other hand, is a tax on the privilege of using, doing something with a property. For example, business license tax, transient occupancy tax, parcel tax, et cetera. State and local taxes, state and local sales and use tax. The sales tax is a tax on the privilege of selling tangible personal property at retail, and the use tax is imposed on the storage, use, or other consumption of tangible personal property purchased from a retailer. Okay, so, moving back to SB 94, which is the state regulatory scheme. SB 94 adds an excise tax of fifteen percent on the privilege of purchasing cannabis at retail. This is effective January 2018, when the state has said that it will begin issuing licenses for commercial cannabis uses. SB 94 also adds an excise tax of nine dollars twenty-five cents for a dryweight ounce of flowers, and two dollars and seventy-five cents for the leaves, the privilege of cultivating cannabis. This is also effective January 1st, 2018. SB 94 does not affect local government's authority to impose taxes on medical or non-medical cannabis. Some notable exemptions here, cannabis cultivated for personal use is exempt from cultivation tax. So if you're cultivating for your personal use under SB 94, which is the six plants indoor, indoor cultivation, you're exempt from the cultivation tax. Medical cannabis is exempt from state and local sales tax, but not other state or local taxes. So they're not wholly exempt. Okay, so taxes and fees on cannabis under SB 94. This is a breakdown of the various taxes that will apply to both commercial use and medical use. Okay, and allocation of state excise taxes on cannabis under SB 94. The basic breakdown is sixty percent to youth programs, substance abuse, education, prevention, and treatment, twenty percent to environmental cleanup remediation. This is because there's a lot of unpermitted cultivation occurring on both state and federal lands that just, you know, took a lot of water from the area and left behind a lot of debris that wasn't cleaned up. So, they're setting aside twenty percent to address those issues. Another twenty percent is going towards reducing DUIs and negative health impacts. Okay, so, local taxes.
Mark, can you go back to that last slide and look at the very bottom of it?
Mark, can you go back to that last slide and look at the very bottom of it?
Right. Yes. So a city or county that bans cultivation, including outside personal cultivation or the retail sale of cannabis, is not eligible for some grants. So SB 94 makes some money from revenue available to local governments to combat DUIs, drugged driving, things like that, and then also the enforcement costs related to commercial businesses in the area. And for cities that say, "We're absolutely going to have a flat ban here, we're not going to allow any cannabis activity to occur in our jurisdiction," they will not be eligible for those grants. So that's something to consider in the event that the council wants to prohibit cannabis. So local taxes and fees on cannabis. Under SB 94, the new state excise taxes are in addition to any other tax imposed by a city, county, or city and county. So new, increased or extended local taxes must require voter approval. This is two-thirds vote for special tax and a majority vote for general tax. Most common local excise tax is a business license tax, and this is for the privilege of doing business or the privilege of being able to do something. And that can be imposed on dispensing, manufacturing, cultivation, and transportation of cannabis. One limitation is that local government's sales tax may not differ from Bradley Burns' Uniform Sales and Use Tax Law in either what is taxed or the rate of the tax. Local taxes and fees on cannabis, taxes versus fees. So business license taxes allow revenue to be appropriated for any municipal purpose unless the tax has been approved as a special tax for a special purpose. Business regulatory fees, on the other hand, may recover for the reasonable regulatory costs for issuing licenses and permits, performing investigations, inspections, and audits, and enforcing these regulations. And they should be scaled appropriately. So this would, for example, be tied to staff time that's required to accept and process Local taxation. The city may impose its own taxes for cultivating, manufacturing, producing, processing, preparing, storing, providing, donating, selling, or distributing cannabis. So a lot of potential for taxation. So voter approval on the local level here. Any tax imposed must be passed by the voters, and this is a Prop 218 issue here. A special tax must be passed by 66% vote, a general tax must be passed by 50% vote. The earliest opportunity to place a measure on the ballot to tax cannabis is November 2018. How much taxation? So the sales tax is set around 8.75%. Malkursa imposes a 15% gross receipts tax. Also, local gross receipts tax at, it depends on the tax bracket. And then also, the cultivation tax, it kind of starts to add up. So that's something to consider as well. Some cannabis business owners consider that before entering a particular market, the tax is too high, the tax is too low. So that's something that they consider. Local taxation. This is for mostly cultivation of cannabis here. It can be a square footage tax. For example, if you have, if you're working with a 10,000-square-foot indoor facility, you'd want to tax that facility more than a 5,000-square-foot cultivation facility. Or it can be a gross receipts tax for any sale of the cannabis. So different ways to tax cultivation. So that's been just a very, just a quick crash course in all things cannabis. For the next steps here, provide direction regarding how to proceed. Two, draft a health and safety ordinance and get it approved at the city council. And three, if allowed, propose a tax measure and get it approved by the voters. And the fourth step is rigorous monitoring and compliance. I'm going to open it up to questions.
And let me just highlight several things. This has been a presentation on the commercial use of cannabis, whether it's delivery, sale. Under the state law, you are allowed to personally cultivate your own marijuana for your own cannabis, sorry, for your own use. You get six plants. And so you can impose regulations on the personal use of growing marijuana, for instance, safety issues and stuff like that. You can do that, but everyone is allowed under state law to grow their own recreational marijuana. That's what state law provides. So you can't prohibit that. The second thing is that...
Wait a minute. You said...
You cannot prohibit the personal cultivation of marijuana for your own recreational use. You get six plants per person. We can maybe define how big...
...local restrictions to regulate from outside?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm just talking about personal use. We can't touch that. You could ban it for non-personal use.
Right.
But for personal cultivation, local restrictions would need to be taken into account, and cultivation outdoors would be regulated.
Right.
It's got to be indoors.
Yes, that's correct. And I'll add a point about indoor cultivation. Cities also have the authority to reasonably regulate indoor cultivation as well.
Right. Yeah, so you can say it can't be outdoors, but if someone wants to do it indoors, we can say, put rules on it, but we can't prohibit that. The second thing is that the big change in state law is that this new law requires that you take an action. Under the prior law, what we have right now is, we have a general thing that all uses must comply with state and federal law. And what this law said is, you've got to be specific with respect to cannabis. You have to affirmatively state you're going to ban it, you're going to allow it. So you have to take action. You can't just rely upon the general law in the book that says you'll comply with state and federal law. So you have to take an action, which is why we're bringing this to you now, because you want to have the laws in effect on January 1st. That's assuming the state gets done with all its regulations. Because one of the weird things is, it's legal for personal recreation as of January 1st, assuming that the state has completed all its regulations, ready to go, and they're in the process of doing that. But we want to have something in place January 1st, which means we want you to have an ordinance, the second meeting of the ordinance at the second meeting in November, which means the first reading would be the first, you know, week in November, which means you've got three months to do further studies, ask questions, tell us what to do, and we'll do it.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Please.
I understood, I understand from what you said, Mr. Trent, that in order to stack sales tax, for example, it would require a vote, and if it's for a general use, it would be, it's 50%, plus one and 66 and two-thirds for special. But in order to put that in place, that would have to go to the ballot. If the council and the community wanted to allow for recreational use or distribution, whatever, that if, could a proposer, could a vendor agree, simply agree that, yes, we will donate to the city some amount, because what's going to happen is, if it's allowed, is the trailer is going to be the vote. The trailer maybe couldn't happen until June, maybe, of next year, or would it be December, January, April? I don't know. So, but could a party say, and I'm not advocating it one way or the other, I'm just asking a question. Could a party say, "Look, I want to open up under your new ordinance, and I'm willing to pay, donate, if you will, the amount that would be equated to what you might tax." And could they, on their own volunteer to do that, that, is that...
So I haven't seen it tied to a tax, because it's hard to tell how much taxation or revenue would come from sales that haven't happened yet. But cities have developed a way to be reimbursed for the costs related to setting up a regulatory structure, and this amount can be charged through application fees.
Let me help a little bit, maybe, or just confuse the issue, if I may, Madam Mayor. Cities have the authority under state law to, using development agreements, the development agreement, that the developer can pay fees even though they're not tied to the AB 1600 law. Is it not possible that if a party agreed, even though we didn't have something in place, that they could agree, no one's twisting their arm, well, maybe they are twisting their arm, but a little bit, but could they agree to pay what might be equivalent of a tax while the city moves forward with a ballot measure, or without a ballot measure? Couldn't they agree to pay it, and wouldn't that, might that be something they could do? And I guess that's under the concept of a development agreement, even though I'm not talking about a development. Does that make any sense?
Well, yeah. I mean, obviously, if a cultivator or a seller agrees to voluntarily pay, yes, they could do that. I think the one issue we'd have to look at is, if the city decides to allow cultivation or sale of personal marijuana, and then you decide how many businesses. Is it one, two, or three? And let's say it's one, and you've got five applicants for that. I think we could look at, to see if one of the factors in that is whether pending attacks, you would donate money. I don't know if that's legal or not, but that's something that may be one of those factors that we could look at to see if that's the council's direction.
So, I have another question. So if I want to be a cultivator, and right now, it seems pretty difficult for people to be able to find land to cultivate. Now, I don't know. Maybe the island company or the conservancy is willing to give land for cultivation, for some form of cultivation. Could I do something within three miles offshore if I had a barge? A little D-cell plant and some solar. Could I park that out on the ocean and...
Go to state lands.
Are you have to go to state lands?
It's their dirt, even in the water.
That's a very creative solution and question. I think that avoids the federal conflict, because we're still within, you know, the three miles off the island. I don't know what other concerns that would raise.
Okay. Because it would be, for somebody to do cultivation here is going to be extremely difficult, it appears. And I think we talked about this just briefly. The, one question is, can a pharmacy, could they be a distributor of that? But one question, and but the second one is, if we allowed somebody to either have a delivery service, a delivery service, knowing that in order for them to get the cannabis here, they're having to get it here illegally, really, what is that all about? And how would we work or not be able to work around that?
Okay. So regarding the first question of whether a pharmacy could distribute, yes, if they obtained a state license, and assuming that it was also allowed on a local level, and they obtained the local permit as well. So there's no prohibition against a pharmacy distributing cannabis. As to the question about the delivery service, there's, so given the conflict between state and federal law and where California's territorial boundaries end and start, there can't be frequent or ongoing transportation of cannabis back and forth. And in the event that the council decides to allow deliveries and perhaps issues a permit to an applicant who wants to provide delivery services, the council could, the city could enter into an indemnification agreement with the applicant, wherein the applicant indemnifies and defends the city in the case of a lawsuit against any liability related to the issuance of that permit.
Yeah, I would think it would really depend on whether the federal government is actually going to enforce the transportation laws on the Catalina Express, or helicopter, or private boats coming over. Well, and how, right.
No, and how were...
Well, you'd have Coast Guard. They may do inspections. If, for instance, if they know that there's going to be a delivery service in Avalon, and they do some work, and they find that there's no place on Avalon where it's cultivated, then the question is, how does it get there? And then they could go ahead and maybe set up some kind of inspection. What we're saying is, if the council still wanted to allow the delivery, what we would do in our agreement with that service is, we would just say, if there's any federal enforcement of this, you're indemnifying, you know, taking care of the city. It's at your risk, not the city's risk.
That would create such an overwhelming cost to the state of California. That wouldn't even be a reasonable solution. Everything, it'd be the sheriffs would get involved, they'd get their boats involved, the Coast Guard would get involved, everybody would get, it'd be ridiculous.
Again, I'm not saying, I'm saying that's the hypothetical where it could happen. Is it likely?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Okay. You talked about Colorado. Federal law applies in Colorado, and there are people engaged in commercial sales for the last few years. So the fact that you cross the waters does not make the question any different than it does within the state.
That's not what I'm understanding. That's not what I'm hearing, and I don't know why, again, I don't know why it would be, come on up, Pam, because I don't know why it would be exempt.
Her point is, is that the federal government has chosen, in Colorado, in Washington, and in, there's another state too, not to enforce the federal laws against personal recreational use of marijuana.
Yeah, so why would they do it in Catalina?
Personal recreational...
Actually, any cultivation, any sale, I mean, all of it is illegal under federal law.
Right.
Regardless of whether you're transporting it across the ocean because there's federal jurisdiction there, or you're in the state of California, or you're in California, the question is whether the feds are actually going to enforce it or not. And I don't know really, you know, the enforcement would be against the person who's engaged in the sales. It's essentially their risk that they're taking by saying, you know, "We think the feds are going to forego enforcement, and I'm going to rely on the state's licensing of me," kind of thing.
Were there questions, either from the council or others that are out there, or comments so far? I mean, go ahead, Pam.
So I have two things. Just as kind of like a housekeeping, the city council needs to, I believe, pretty quickly make clear that the cultivation prohibition only applies to commercial, so that you're consistent with the state law. Because there's nothing in the ordinance right now that makes it clear that you're allowed to personally cultivate up to six plants.
I would agree, and that's why I want to get, I want to do it all at once.
Oh, yeah. I don't know that that's going to work out, because that's kind of the point I'm going to make. I think that you have so many other things on your plate, and most people who are engaged in use marijuana recreationally have figured out how to do it, or they're going to go home and start growing plants, since they're allowed to do that under the state law. I'm on the LA County Commission for Local Government Services, which looks to find ways to economically and efficiently help the counties and cities work together. And they have set up an Office of Cannabis Management. The man came in and gave, the head of it, Mark Negrito, gave a very comprehensive explanation of how they're approaching coming up with a regulatory measure. And they're also gathering information about what other cities are doing. Sometimes I think maybe it's just better to sit back and see what somebody else is going to do, and let them invent the wheel, and then copy it, honestly. But one of the things they are doing that I think is, might be helpful, is public listening sessions. And all the county libraries, they have something set up so that the people, public can come in and just weigh in, without any, you know, set ordinance that they're looking at, just talk about what their concerns are, so those concerns can be reflected in whatever they do. do.
And I would agree with Pam, is that we have ordinances ready to go that we've done on the whole gamut of things. So you're not going to be reinventing the will, it's going to be, you tell us what you want and then we'll make it applicable to Avalon. But we, again, we need direction on what you want, and you may decide to have more public, you know, meetings and stuff to make sure you get that, you get that out. But again, just that the deadline is, for me, November.
So if there is, let's say there's a delivery service, if there's a, if there's a delivery service that is, a delivery service that's in Long Beach, for example, and they get it here and they deliver it to the people wherever they deliver it, do we, there's really no way, or is there any way for us to get money taxed, taxes off of that? If it's going there and they're delivered and we don't know when they're coming and we don't know where they are?
You mean if it's under the table?
Well, no, but no, they have, their delivery service is registered in Compton or Long Beach or whatever, and they come over however often they want and they deliver it to my home, there's no way the city can generate any revenue from that, correct?
Well.
Because we wouldn't know about it.
You wouldn't know about it, yeah. I guess the question is, right now, you prohibit delivery.
Right.
So if it's done underground, you're not going to, you're not going to capture any revenue. So what we wanted to do is, if you want to allow delivery, let's regulate it and then you can tax it.
And then it's the local permit.
Right.
And I'll add that, the state is developing a track and trace system to track cannabis from seed to sale, so it would, there would be a system where, you know, it leaves the cultivation facility, someone scans a barcode and it says, it's this type, this many ounces, grams, whatever else, and, you know, part of it was diverted to this seller, part of it was sent to this seller, and then it traces it all the way down to the end user, so there could be a way to find out about it, so, for taxation purposes.
And I'm just concerned that, I mean, you know, the cannabis as it is, I really think cannabis that is tested is really what is important because it's crazy how strong it could be and for anybody, you know, for them to know that they're getting, if they're going to use it for medicinal purposes or even recreational, you'd like to think that they know what they're, what they're putting in their system. And to get rid of, you called it gray market or black market cannabis that's now being laced with other things, I mean, that's just, that's just not, that's just not a good thing, you know?
I'm really concerned about the edibles too. That stuff is really dangerous to kids and animals. It's not marked that well, it's not identifiable, it's wrapped in sometimes clear cellophane, it looks like a cupcake or a brownie or a cookie. Talked to Dr. Danny, there's been multiple dozens of dogs that have eaten medical marijuana and brought in and almost overdosed, so, and you can overdose, you can overdose on, on the edibles, so. But the thing is, people that are terminally ill or people that are very sick, that works well for them when they can't take things like morphine and demerol and other real strong drugs or they can't, the body can't take those anymore, or maybe before they need to take those, they, they need that medicinal dose. So I think we need to be compassionate about those people. So it's something that really we need to understand, it gets very complex, and I think Pam had a great idea that, you know, we ought to tag along, figure out what's, other cities have something similar that we might be able to implement here, because it's inevitable and it's coming, and if we don't do something about it, we're going to be left in the dust and we're not going to give people options and, so, I'm glad we're discussing it.
And I, just a question kind of off the cuff, or just a, because how is law enforcement testing for people under the influence of cannabis? What is the device and how are they doing that?
So that technology, that technology is still being developed, and on a state level, they're trying to come up with training programs and things like that for law enforcement officials to be able to recognize signs of drug driving, and that's.
But you gave statistics on vibe of being under the influence of cannabis, and I guess how did, how did they even come up with those numbers if they don't really have it, you know, they don't have something they're blowing in on site, or are they just doing that on, once they wreck and then they take them to the hospital and then they test, or?
Well, it could be a variety of tests, including field sobriety tests, and also blood or urine tests, things like that, after the fact.
I mean, do we have, Captain Hocken, can you speak to that at all?
Yes, ma'am, and that's a very good question. Where the problem is now, that this gentleman's correct, is we have drug, it's called D R E, Drug Recognition Experts, so if we stop somebody, we can determine if they're under the influence of marijuana, and the stagmas, vertical, horizontal, just all the F S Ts that you do to determine if somebody's under the influence of any drug. The problem comes in is, let's say they give a urine test, or there's a test where they can take a piece of your hair and test it for marijuana, marijuana stays in your system for 30 days. And by being in your system for 30 days, the legal problem is, how long, how under the influence were you on that Monday when you were stopped? Was that day 26, day 3, day 8? That's where the courts are having the problem right now. But they are seeing more people under the influence. You just have to get the evidence, such as if it's, if they're under the influence of methamphetamine, you know, you can take a urine sample and they pull it out and it's there, it's there for a few hours, and so you can prove that they were under that influence at that time. Marijuana's a little bit different right now, so that's what the courts have not decided on yet, they're in the process of that.
Questions or comments from the community?
In fact, Mayor, if I just may say, in relationship to that last statement, when we went through the anti-drug, you know, the drug testing program, there are some people who have, who maybe historically were heavy users of cannabis. If they stop, it can, according to what we've been told, it could be in their system 60 days. Now, they may not be under the, quote, under the influence in the same way, but, but a heavy user who stops could, could in fact have that in their system longer.
So I'm just trying to understand exactly what you have to decide before November. You have to decide yes or no on commercial cultivation?
Can you, okay, what you have to decide by November is, do we want to allow the recreational use, the sale of recreational marijuana in the city? In other words, a store selling it.
So you have to, and you already have an ordinance that does not allow?
No, it does not allow medical marijuana. The ordinance as it, you're, right now prohibits any use that is against state or federal law. And so federal law, technically under the ordinance, you cannot sell recreational marijuana. But state law says that you specifically have to say, you have to have an ordinance specifically saying, you're not going to allow, or you're going to allow, the recreational sale of marijuana. So you have to decide, do you want to have stores that sell recreational marijuana?
Okay.
You've already decided that you're not going to allow any sale, delivery of medical marijuana or cultivation. You can, you can change that. You have to allow the personal indoor use of cultivation, but you can decide if you want to regulate that. In other words, you know, for instance, a lot of electricity, fire hazards, if you, you know, things that you can require, if people want to do this, you have to allow it, but you can put in safeguards for safety. So, so if you don't do that, people are going to do it, you're not going to have any ability of police power. So again, it's, how you want to deal with, do you want to regulate the indoor cultivation of marijuana? Do you want to allow the commercial sale of marijuana? And if you're going to allow the commercial sale of marijuana, do you want to start the process for putting a tax on so that you can gain revenue from that, both in terms of to cover your own costs and like the initiative that you had, the citizens had a year ago? If you want to put a general tax on that, you could say, you know, we're going to have, if people are purchasing cannabis, that there's a general tax that goes into your general revenues.
We also have to decide on the allowance of commercial cultivation or not?
Cultive, yes, well, right, yeah. Right now, you do not allow commercial cultivation, if you want to change that. If you don't do anything, it's already there, because you've been very specific. But if you want to change that, what I would hope that we can do is have one giant cannabis ordinance. You don't have to, it'd be easier to have a comprehensive policy for cannabis for the city of Avalon.
And we have to decide or not decide, because right now, where would delivery service fit into this?
Right now, you, you ban the delivery of medical marijuana, so you would have to specifically decide, in terms of the sale of that, you know, you would just put in, if you're going to ban sales, it's going to be to ban sales and delivery, or you're going to allow the sale and delivery.
You can't pick one?
You could pick one, yes. You could only, you, for instance, you could technically say.
Only have delivery service?
You can only have delivery services.
Okay.
If you want.
What's that?
Well, you know.
I think that's for medical marijuana, I don't think it's for, I don't think it's for recreational.
So may I ask for a little bit more clarification? The state allows how many plants for medical marijuana use for?
Personal indoor cultivation at six. Mark can answer the question about what is defined as a, what is defined as a plant.
But you changed our ordinance when you, and you reduced what the state allowed, correct? I'm trying to recall.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. What happened was, when, okay. Avalon originally was going to allow three plants, but then the council decided not to allow any cultivation, period. So right now, the law is, there's no cultivation.
Okay.
Well, it's consistent with state law now, but it won't be January 1st, which is why we're bringing this.
So we went from three to six, is what we?
No, you, well, state law.
Technically.
No, you went from three to zero, now it's six.
But now it's six, that's what I mean, I mean.
Okay.
Correct, right.
Thank you.
I remember that.
Scott, do we need clarification on the indoor cultivation issue?
Yes.
Okay. So SB 94, this carries, this carried over from Prop 9064 into SB 94 here. The state allows local jurisdictions to reasonably regulate indoor personal cultivation. The state regs do not kind of delineate what constitutes reasonable regulations or not, but a number of cities have, you know, required a registration requirement, things like agreements with obtaining consent from the owner if you're a tenant, or providing proof of ownership if it's a house that's owned by the person, and also things like inspections to ensure that the growth area is safe, things like that. So those are some forms of reasonable regulations that other cities have adopted.
So, because you're talking indoor, so nobody can plant a couple of plants on their roof where the sun shines?
They, yes, they can, but also the city is authorized to reasonably regulate that.
So they could grow it on their deck?
Well, we could ban it.
Right.
You can ban outdoor cultivation.
Yes, allow it.
But you could allow it too.
Okay.
And again, you have to allow indoor.
Right.
Outdoor, it's, it's what you, what you want to do.
Now they can't grow it.
Right now, you cannot grow it, period. That changes January 1st.
Okay. Okay, the questions or comments?
So I just spent a week with my 87-year-old father and 83-year-old mother, and while I was there, my father whipped out his CBD salve because he has significant arthritis pain, and I talked to him about the experience. He drove out because several of the cities in Colorado, they are allowed to prohibit, like here, commercial dealing. He went online and found an app called Weed Maps, he found where the nearest place was. My 87-year-old father drove to the town, had trouble finding it because the cities are using a lot of sign regulations, they don't want places having obvious signs. So he asked somebody, where is this place? He went and he bought his salve. It's, it's 2017, and when 87-year-old men are using CBD oil, I think, and salve, it's time to recognize that our culture has changed, our mores have changed, and that the majority of the people in the state have decided that adults should be able to use it. So I'm in favor of not imposing any kind of regulations such as the ones that Mark described. I think that those are really intended to make it difficult for people and to invade people's privacy. I think the idea is, if you want to do it privately inside your house or in a deck that people can't see from public places, that you should be allowed to do that. So I encourage the city to not require registration or any of the other things that really are going to invade people's privacy.
Can I ask you a question, Pam?
Yeah.
What would you think is about a storefront in Avalon?
What, what I think?
A storefront, yeah.
I have, I have mixed feelings about that. You know, we're so small and we have so many people coming here to have a good time. I think that you, you're going to have to depend on your law enforcement to tell you whether they feel it's something that they can, you know, address if issues arise and in enforcement.
I appreciate your input.
I mean, I can't imagine that from a commercial standpoint, there's enough business that you would, you know, have people clamoring to open three or four or five of them, but I don't know.
I think that the general consensus that I've heard, and I respect your opinion too, and that's why I asked, was that even people who actually engage in medicinal and recreational use at this time on Catalina do not want a storefront? Just because it just, it would just be a little over the top for Avalon, it's just too small. So they say we don't need it, but, you know, we'll, we'll see where we go with that.
Yeah, I really, I haven't really come to a decision about.
Because we were talking about, well, let's have meetings, let's have sit downs. That happens every day for me, and probably for all of us. Wherever you go, people stop you and they let you know what's going on and what's on their mind, what they think of things.
Yeah, the only thing I will say, because I do, and I know you agree, that medicinal use is really important, and if somebody can't get to the mainland, then you're effectively telling them they can't have access to something that they might need. So there might be some limited thing through the pharmacy even that would make sense to see how that goes. I mean, I'm a believer in steps, in, and seeing, you know, how something goes as a first go, and if you don't feel like diving in.
Yeah, thank you. Comments, others?
Lot to think about.
Yes, Jan? Please.
Is that your birthday button? Oh, no, my eyes aren't so good.
Colorado. What I was wondering is, as you're going through all this and you're thinking these things through, I think, thank you for saying it's not until January 1st that you can cultivate indoors. Because a lot of people today think that past and everything is happening now. And I have to admit, I tell a few people here and there, it's not legal yet, so please go away from Ryan. But what I was wondering is, what, are you going to be making regulations now that we have smoking regulations, regular smoking cigarettes, you can't smoke here, you can't smoke here? Will that fall in with the cannabis use in public? Or can cannabis, are you thinking in terms of, I can light my marijuana and walk down the street, just like I do with a cigarette, is that happening? I don't, I don't know. And the other thing is, I don't know if there's a safeguard or not, but... Or can cannabis, are you thinking in terms of, I can light my marijuana and walk down the street just like I do with a cigarette? Is that happening? I don't, I don't know. And the other thing is, I don't know if there's a safeguard or not, but we know that secondhand smoke is bad, and I have not heard differently from cannabis secondhand smoke. And my concern is, so far, it's been fine when I've talked to people around, but I'll be, I was in my house the other day and all of a sudden, I started getting a headache and I go, what is that horrible, horrible smell? So I sat there a moment, a hot summer night, so my door is open, and I walk and I go, oh my gosh, there's three people on the wall smoking pot. So I just said to them, it's getting into my house, would you please go elsewhere, but also remember, it's not legal to smoke pot the way you're smoking pot right now. And they were very kind and they moved. That's happened a number of times. But what I'm wondering is, if it's legal, am I going to sit in my house and have my door open in a hot night and have pot coming? Can I do anything when a pot comes in? Can I say it's not legal? Or what's going to happen? So are there any safeguards happening for that sort of thing is what I was thinking?
Mark just?
I was just going to say, also, I'm, for medicinal purposes, I go with that, but for the rest, on recreational and such, I am against for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny.
Okay. So tackling the first question of what to do about cannabis that's being smoked in public, it's not allowed to be smoked in public on the street and the sidewalk, things like that. And also, under the state regulations, restrictions of where you can smoke cannabis can trail the restrictions on where you can smoke cigarettes. So for example, the, you know, not within 20 feet of an entrance window, things like that, we can follow those regulations or we can make them even more strict than that. And for places that you can smoke cannabis, generally within the privacy of your own home or your friend's home, and there are some businesses that are looking to open cannabis smoking lounges. But of course, the restrictions on those businesses is that they can't be combined with a liquor license or the sale or consumption of tobacco, and then can't be visible from kind of public standpoint, and there's a number of other restrictions, but those are some places that a person could conceivably consume cannabis. Safeguards for outdoor use, that might be, sounds like a nuisance action or perhaps a question for code enforcement if someone's smoking in front of your house or blowing smoke around into your, into your home.
Your nuisance ordinance contains the word noxious smells, so it's overwhelming. You could do that. Also, looking at your current regulations with respect to smoking, and it covers any cigarette pipe, et cetera, vaporizer used to burn tobacco products, weed, plant, or other combustible substance. So you already cover that. So unless you change your ordinance to specifically deal with cannabis, where you ban smoking is where you're going to ban cannabis, and you don't need any change to it. You've already banned it in the public beaches. We, I think we discussed this last meeting.
So to answer Jenny's question, it's already illegal for people to be smoking in public that, like they were outside of her house?
No. Actually, it's on, in elevators. You ban smoking in elevators?
Huh.
Public beach, on the pleasure pier-
Okay.
Any outdoor public service area or within a public building.
Oh, that's-
So, or within 20 feet of a public building. So-
Oh, I see.
On other streets, you can smoke a cigarette and you can smoke cannabis, once it's legal.
We just don't enforce it.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have this, these disordinance, but we just don't enforce it.
I think it's, it's enforced with discretion. It's, I mean, the sheriff says that they do enforce it. They let people know, hey, this is not a good idea for you to be smoking here. Please go somewhere else. I mean, no, they don't slap the cuffs on people, I don't think. I don't, that would be ridiculous. Then you all have to be busy every day down there just resting people for smoking in public. I've seen 40 people a day smoking all over town. I mean, come on. I don't want them to leave town or get arrested. Or do we? We want people to get arrested for smoking a cigarette?
I don't know where we're, I don't know where that came, where, I don't know where you're coming from, from that. The question was asked about, is there, is it the same for smoking cannabis in the same locations as smoking cigarettes? And that, so the ordinance covers that. We don't enforce the ordinance now. So that's where, to, to answer sort of Jenny's question of, you know, what do you do? Because there's families and kids that walk down Front Street that don't want their kids having the secondhand smoke, you know, what do you, what can you say?
And we have a noxious ordinance.
Yes.
Ours is under noxious.
Noxious smell is called.
I'm not going to go there. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Sure. Okay. Now they're, now they're getting active. Getting a little more active.
Given my appearance, I came from the beach. It is Catalina, so you have to enjoy that on days like this. I just want to speak on behalf of, I guess, my demographic. Joe said that we don't want a storefront or possibly delivery service. I think we do. We pay a lot of money to go back and forth and for us as adults, and law is here for us adults, it should be a little bit easier for us to get it. I have my medical marijuana license, so I personally would like at least a delivery service, if not a storefront, so that way I'm not having to pay all that money to go over town and come back. And I don't think I'm the only person in my age demographic that, I'm 33, so in that age demographic that wants something accessible for us or like her, where, you know, older person who doesn't want to have to go to town. I think it's something that we should at least consider and not just outright ban. We should at least choose one or the other. I can understand not both, but at least give us an option of one or the other.
Great. Thank you for coming.
I want to say something to that. I have talked personally with over 63 medical patients in this town, and every single one of them are against a storefront, but they all agree that they need easy access to their medicine on this island. They all agree that a delivery service would be discreet enough that it doesn't disturb the rest of this town, but it serves the purpose of the people who need it. Also, on the other front of edibles and things like that, they are now creating new things like CBD pills, CBD and THC pills. They're also creating more menu labeling laws, just like restaurants and food services establishments have to label their calories and stuff now. These manufacturers that are going to start coming up in the next year, those manufacturers are going to have to follow those same menu labeling laws. So those concerns are going to-
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because I know there's a use for them and I know people will purchase them, but I just know, at, at this point, they're just dangerous and just because of the, there is no labeling. It's nonexistent.
But out of the 63 people, and these are people of all ages, as young as me and people that are older than my own father, that have told me specifically they don't want to walk into a storefront.
Yeah. It's anonymous all over town that people don't want-
That was the biggest difference with Measure X. You threw in dispensary and storefront and the same law, and even people that use didn't support that law because of the fact that it said physical location.
And again, that, that wasn't the city council. That was, that was a-
Well, I'm just thinking as a voter, as a voter, I'm sitting in the booth and I'm reading that law, and in it, it says physical location. I don't want to walk into a physical location. So.
Excellent. Thanks for your input.
I just have one last question while we have the expert here. Is delivery by mail or UPS or FedEx legal in the state of California?
No, and please do not do that. That would violate a lot of federal laws and state laws. I hope that sufficiently addresses that.
So no?
So state law doesn't allow, so.
So that, you know, and I'm not, certainly not a professional on what's what, but if there's like a, like, is it the THC that is the drug? That's the regulation? So like salves and lotions, you can't order something like that from an online source?
No. I think not maybe.
No? I mean, I don't know.
Can you see more like a set of those and see if you can buy them?
Oh.
There are two parts that you actually need both of them activated.
I see.
You have a small.
So then you can buy stuff that's high levels of THC or higher levels of the CBD, you know, depending on what your needs are. Like the salves wouldn't have probably high THC content, but they really are good at the other stuff they do and-
I see.
Right. But the USPS or any kind of transportation service like that should not be used to move cannabis, which is still illegal under federal law.
And CBDs got put on the schedule, as a Schedule I as well, correct or no? Did they remove that? I heard it was on the Schedule I. CBDs, I heard they were put on a Schedule I.
No, I think that's on Schedule I.
No? Okay.
Well, I think at this point, it's hard to separate the two or find a, a strain that, you know, for example, the federal government has said, oh, this is a great amount of CBD and, you know, no THC, we love this and you can use this. So that hasn't happened yet. So for the purposes of answering that question, no, we can't use transportation services like that.
Did you have questions, Mayor Bridget? Anything else? Well, then. Yeah. Going once, going twice. Mark, we'd like to thank you very much for coming here and sharing your knowledge. Will you be leaving us your slideshow? And did you have that in a paper form for us?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Annie, it says, according to the DEA, marijuana extracts including CBD are Schedule I drugs.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, then we'll-
So, wait, hang on. Well, do we want to, any direction or do we want to have another study session? Just, I, I want to keep this, I want to keep this ball rolling.
Well, I think that, like today, the public is here, which is really great, and I think we should encourage our fellow residents to, to see what was on, what we discussed today. And I would like people to get in touch with us as they see fit, as they already do, but continue to do that. And I don't know when we want to come back, but I think maybe we should see if we're coming up with some consensus on anything. That would probably be the next, next discussion.
Well, we are, we had some consensus today. That is on storefront and, I mean, that's from the general public, not just from me, but somebody who's come in just out of, you know, took, taken his own poll. So basically, they don't want a storefront. The town does not want a storefront. They want, I mean, one gentleman did say he wants a storefront out of hundreds that I've talked to, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, delivery systems seem to be something that is very interesting and appeasing to the people. I don't want to, so we know that. I mean, not right now. I'd like to see some kind of a breakdown on a piece of paper that we can X out yes, no to, to growing, how many plants, indoor, outdoor. That would be nice if we could get some kind of a question answer sheet.
Like on these five issues?
So why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't I suggest that we will take PowerPoint and put it on the city website. We will work with staff in some kind of a survey, and then we can have that ready for your distribution as well as the city's. And then we'll give it a month, and that way we come back, maybe the first meeting in September, so that we can at least take those informal surveys and get a sense of the community as well as, you know, encourage members of the community to give us input so that we can-
Control online surveys.
Right.
We've had experience with-
Right. I know. I know.
Well, and I have concern that, my concern would be, for example, a delivery service. Would the, does the general public, our voting public, which is, we know who our voting public is, really know and understand? And then that's the whole question. If it doesn't affect you, then you shouldn't even vote on it. I mean, you know, why should you have an opinion on?
I'm, I'm just trying to come up a way with, for you to get public input other than, you know, asking people.
I mean, a sheet for us because we, we represent these people. They're, they're in our faces every day. They come, they're not afraid to come up to us and let us know what they think and feel. I'm going to bring you my honest opinion. I mean, if people don't respect that and that I'm not bringing forward their, their, their true values and their concerns, then I'm not going to get elected next time. I mean, it's obvious. It's, people are, people do trust us and they trust that we're going to do what's right for the community. So if you could possibly come up with something for us that we can, we can just have for, for the general public, then that would be great because-
We will, we will develop a talking points for the city council and we'll hand that to you. And that way, I just think we can come back and, and we can get that done at the end of this week. I think to get maximum input for you, we can, we can do it the second meeting in August or we can do the first meeting in September when you want to have a further study session.
Because the talking points are sales of recreational, sale of medicinal, cultivation, delivery service.
Right.
There's four. And what?
Pharmacy.
And the pharmacy.
And the pharmacy.
Well, and we found that that's, that's, yes.
Well, the question is, it's legal, but do you want, do you want staff to reach out to the pharmacy?
Absolutely.
And see if they're interested in this?
Yeah. Just a quick question. So, so those are the four things that I think we, we just need to hear about, and then there's all the little specifics.
All right. And do you want to, you want to have that further study session?
Next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah. I do. That's my vote.
What are we doing on the next meeting? Is that budget?
We, we have a number of items on the agenda, but maybe we could mention, maybe we can give you a list of those. There's a number of things coming back, including sedimentation and budgets and all those good things that we should be doing.
All right. Well, I'm not against soon. I just want, I just know, we have a light agenda today, but we got, I know we're going to have tougher ones coming forward, so. Okay. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We actually adjourned this?
Yep.
Okay. Can you adjourn? Turn your mic in the packet. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of August 1st, and we already have the roll call. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for standing, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we would, please, please stand for the invocation by Bob Mesher.
Almost 3,000 years ago, Solomon, the king of Israel, asked for wisdom. He desired and he received the gift to carefully listen, to ponder what he heard, to understand the issues at hand, and to justly respond. This evening, let us ask for that same gift of wisdom for our leaders at all levels of government and especially for our city. Amen.
Thank you. And if we could just pause a moment to remember Pat Goslin, who is married to our beloved Fire Chief Jack Goslin, who passed away this last weekend. Please be seated. I hate to think it's going to take me 3,000 years to get wisdom. First of all- Okay, first of all, I'd like to call up Captain Hawking.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council members. The first thing I'd just like to say, everything at the Sheriff's Department has been going very smooth. I really don't have any updates. We have received a couple of inquiries regarding the restrooms between the library and the Sheriff's Department. In the past, those have always been locked and you would have to come to the Sheriff's Department to get the key or to the library to get the key. And we're going to change that. We're going to have them open during regular business hours, say eight in the morning until eight or nine PM, and then they'll be locked after that. So we won't have any undesirables kind of hanging out in there, but it'll be open to the public. And on the 4th of July, everyone knows we had that beautiful parade and the fireworks show and so forth. And as a personal note, I'm into photography as a hobby, so I just saw how beautiful all that was and I took a couple photos and I printed one for the city and I'd just like to give it to, give it to you.
Oh.
Whoa. Nice.
Wow.
Very nice.
That is amazing. That is awesome. Thank you so very much, Captain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a nice picture.
I see a great place for it.
Yeah.
Coming out of your head.
Mr. Shanson's got a spot. So thank you very much. This is something I enjoy and I really appreciate it.
Well, we're very glad you enjoyed it. Thank you for sharing. That's awesome. Okay, and we have a, we have a distinguished guest with us this evening. Did you want to introduce?
Well, Mayor and Council, it's of course, our, I know your honor, your honor, your honor. It's, it's our honor to have the council member from Los Angeles, Mr. Boiscano. And, and he, we had, some of us had an opportunity to meet with him. Delightful, represents, in a sense, our neighboring port. And I know that he had some very good, nice words to say about the work that he's doing and how we together might be able to work together for opportunities that exist.
Amazing.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins, Mayor, Marshall and council members. It's great to be here. I'm often reminded by my mother, who has joined me here today. The first time she brought me to this incredible island when I was four years old. And this place is so important to our community in San Pedro and Wilmington. So many historical connections dating back to the Phineas Banning days in the 1800s. And the transformation that's taken place here on this island and here in your city is pretty incredible with the retail and dining opportunities, the amazing recreation space. I was here a couple of years back and amazing park space, Pocket Park. My son and daughter and I and my wife were at your park right across the way here working out yesterday morning. And I just want to congratulate you as city leaders that has really taken this transformation in a way that you're also respecting the needs and wants of this community. I do want to thank Mayor Marshall, all the council members, city manager Jenkins, department heads, public safety officials. Captain, that was an incredible, I know he went back on duty, but that was an incredible photo. I'm wondering what F-stop he used on that because those knife shots are quite challenging. To the Sheriff's Department, the LA County Fire Department, thank you so much for having me here tonight. And to Councilmember Cassidy, thank you for arranging this evening. Since taking office, colleagues, it's been my goal in the last several years to build relationships with my neighboring cities and this is no different. I know you're 22 miles south of us. I see you every morning when I wake up from my kitchen window. Even, I've always said that when cities work together, they are stronger together. Whether you're here in Avalon, for us, we feel oftentimes in Council District 15, which I represent five communities, San Pedro, Wilmington, Harbor City, Harbor Gateway and Watts, oftentimes we feel like we're on an island, disconnected from the great city of Los Angeles. But it's, it's been my, my, my effort to again, work together with my neighboring cities, whether Torrance, Gardena, Compton, we're here in Avalon. A city of nearly 4,000 residents here seems to be facing the same issues and concerns of a city of 4 million residents, whether it's the economy, the environment, economic development, of course, housing, social issues, water conservation. And Council District 15 and my district in Avalon have always been linked through tourism, trade and transportation. And today, San Pedro in particular is directly tied to Avalon via the Catalina Express Terminal, which is run by my friend Greg Bombard, as well as the Avalon Freight Service is located at berth 95 in San Pedro, which provides Avalon with its supplies it needs to operate. This great city Avalon's role as a tourist destination is undisputed, but I see plenty of opportunity to, to further increase the ties between tourists who are visiting San Pedro and Wilmington to Avalon and tourists who are visiting Avalon to San Pedro and Wilmington. In fact, we've just embarked on San Pedro Week in Avalon. And I'm hoping to the residents who are here and those who are viewing and listening, we welcome Avalon residents to our LA waterfront. Come to San Pedro and Wilmington. As you know, tourism throughout this region is the largest economic engine specifically for the city of LA. It is our number one industry and through that, we, we know that we're completely tied to this great city of Avalon, the only island destination people can visit when they are in Los Angeles. And as San Pedro continues to grow, as we discussed last night, as a tourist destination, we're also moving forward on the redevelopment of the Wilmington waterfront, of finalizing the design phase of the Wilmington waterfront. But as the San Pedro continues to grow as a tourist destination, we will create a natural growth in Avalon's tourism, especially over the next couple of years as San Pedro public market comes online and as our downtown continues to thrive. So by thinking of tourism regionally, instead of city by city, we can work together to craft interconnective strategies for everyone's benefit. We must find ways to better link the tourism between our two cities. And then as a newly appointed chairman of the City of Los Angeles Trade, Travel and Tourism Committee, I'm looking forward to building a better relationship with each and every one of you. Additionally, Avalon's environmental stewardship sets a standard for cities across the globe. I know there's much we can definitely learn from Avalon about ensuring high water quality for our residents as well as how to improve our water conservation efforts. And as a National League of Cities and California League of Cities Board Member, I've seen firsthand how sharing information between cities is, is critical to spread, spreading the innovation work we are accomplishing to improve our residents' lives. So I look forward to this opportunity to work with Avalon City Council, all the department heads, city manager Jenkins, and to further share, to further discuss our shared values and goals for the benefit of all residents. So thank you again for having me. It's a great, great honor. Mayor Marshall, council colleagues, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I don't know if you've ever had a city council member come to this city, present, but again, it's important for me, leading with, with a heart that also includes everyone. Again, we are the second largest city in, in the country. However, I don't see it that way. We, we need each other to be successful. Thank you, Mayor and council colleagues.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Rosa. Nice meeting you too.
Rosa, did you bring any cookies? Oh, darn.
I, I do have one message. We've got 11 years to go until the Olympics come to LA.
That's right.
And an event in Avalon would be fantastic.
Yeah.
Mr. City Attorney.
Just putting it out there, that was a great announcement yesterday.
Yeah. We are, and Greg Bombard reminded me in 84, this, this island, the city of Avalon, thrived because of the 84 Olympics. And with Mayor Garcetti's announcement yesterday, we are so excited. Waiting additional four years maybe will be beneficial, I know will be beneficial to this entire region as we expand our transit lines and build a couple extra venues to host the LA 28 Olympics. And looking forward, again, another opportunity for us to talk about ways to capture the international community in our respective cities. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, announcements and written communication.
We, I, we have none.
Okay. City manager report?
Just briefly, one item. The council has had some discussions in the past about setting a philosophy for law enforcement. What I would suggest and would bring to you is that in that discussion at a council meeting so that, so that Captain Hawking and the Sheriff's Department will know what your direction is as a body in regard to the philosophy of law enforcement. He's very receptive to that and so I just wanted to mention that.
Great. No, that's, that's great, I get.
The next one?
Yes, yes.
Next one, Ken?
Yes, yes, sir.
It'll be a next one, yes.
Okay. City Attorney.
You've had two hours of us already.
Council members report?
You want to go, Joe? I got a bunch.
I got one. I just have, have an announcement to make. I've gotten a lot of complaints about vehicles, too many of them. I think it's about time the moratorium comes back to us. I think we're about done. We're about full. I don't want to get like all the other cities on the mainland that have no parking or you have to park miles away. There's hardly anywhere to drive anymore. People drive from one block and park two blocks away to go to work two blocks away. And we're done with it. It's, it's, it's over the top. I, I don't know where, where it's, where somebody's going to step up and say, no, that's enough. I think enough is enough. We're getting there. We need another vehicle study session and we need to understand our community. Take a walk downtown, look around, just take a walk, period. Ride a bicycle. Try to be a pedestrian. I stood, I, I was in my golf cart delivering papers today and I saw 10 vehicles pass a lady and a man in a wheelchair trying to get to the museum from, from the Radio Shack area, Catalina Variety Store. They just kept going. Nobody would let the guy in a wheelchair pass. This goes on all day long and I'm tired of it. I'm tired, I'm, I'm, I can't not say anything anymore. Okay, there's few people that come up and they're going to be against this, but that's too bad. What's best for the community is best for the community and what's best for this community right now is for, is for us to act on this. Understand, we have a lot of issues on our table, but the vehicle one is the most important. We've gotten 130 new Scions in this town and I think we ought to take it, do a timeout on, on the Scions as well. I didn't realize that, you know, we would have all this, the, the speeds increase in Avalon. Everybody's trying to get places faster now. Now that the vehicle can go faster, people are speeding more. 130 of them have come over and no, and maybe one or two have left the island. So I thought we were going to basically, and it's kind of my fault because I'm the one who has suggested that these Scions be brought over because I had compassion for the people that wanted to get into the interior. That's what I wanted. I've, I've heard from people, the public outcry was, we just want to get into the interior and since we can't do it in a golf cart, well, then what, let you have a Scion. So we expanded the size a little bit. It was a very contentious issue, as we all know, we were all engaged in it. We let the Scions over and everybody started bringing Scions over who had a golf cart, but they didn't ship their golf cart over back to the mainland. They left it here. So now we have 130 more Scions or however many, maybe it's 80, maybe it's 60. It seems like hundreds of them. I think we ought to say enough is enough on those, go back to just golf carts and put a moratorium on vehicles, period. Because I see more commercial vehicles, they're getting bigger. And then we ought to honor people's blue stickers. The people who've been here the longest, have invested the most money, their families have been here for, for four to five, three, four, five, six generations. Those people, those, those vehicles ought to, ought to stay in those families.
So I agree, and I did ask when we were going to have a next transportation meeting, vehicle meeting, because we do need to have that and I, I agree. Secondly, though, I think it would be interesting if we could get the information of exactly how many Scions that have been registered and also if we could work with a conservancy to see if they can tell us how many of those Scions got.
Passed.
I know. But how, I know, I don't think it's probably many either, but I think to have our numbers, if we want to be a little data driven on this, we might want to get those numbers as well.
I, I spend a lot of time out in the interior, as you know, and I've seen, I've seen a few out there. So I'm glad some people are enjoying the interior with their new vehicles and, and they can do that. So if you're going to get a Scion, I, I suggest you get it immediately because we're, we're going to, we're going to shut this down real soon. I, I don't know, if I had my way, but I'm not sure. That's where I'm tending to think right now in that direction because I don't want it to be Hermosa Beach over here again. I mean, not that there's anything wrong with Hermosa Beach, but if you live there down by the ocean, you're not going to find any parking in a lot of other areas in, in, on the mainland, down by the seashore, so.
I kind of agree with you, Joe, on that too, but the other thing I'd like to find out is how many carts left the island when they got those Scions. To my knowledge right now, I think I heard maybe one or two. And we've got 80 cars, so I don't know. It doesn't work out too well. I think the idea was to get the carts off the street and then really, and that hasn't happened yet. We're getting more, more of the cars over and less of the golf carts. Just something else to look into.
Yes.
So I, I think we have an opportunity coming soon to us if we want it, is that there's SCAG funding for transportation planning, okay? And so if we're interested in putting together a transportation plan that we want to look at all of these factors and look at our whole transportation system and look at the complete street approach. We could apply for that grant and then that would lead to a capital improvement program over a period of 20 years to implement those pieces. So I think it would address, you know, we could do studies with that on which vehicles are on the island, you know, how many have come, how many have left, what speeds they're going, the parking, what routes, is there some different configuration? Is there better pedestrian facilities that we can do? Can we make multimodal? What are we doing with our transit? Where do we make those stops? That's a comprehensive transportation plan. I think that would help answer that.
Quality of life issues are really huge and right now, we're, so visitor comes over and all they see is vehicles. They can't cross the street, have a hard time crossing the street. They rent a bicycle and they just get mowed, they just get left in the dust by just too many vehicles and everybody wants, is in a hurry to go nowhere. I don't understand it. Why, why would you be in a hurry over here?
So I think if we can engineer spaces for each of those modes and make them complimentary and, and look at what those spaces are being used, that's what the transportation plan and a complete street approach would do and make things flow smoother through our community.
I agree, we should be going that way and I know there's some little things that we could do sooner than later.
One of the things we talked about in the last transportation session was having a crossing guard during these busy months at Clarissa and, at the, the two busy intersections. And I don't know if we were.
It's Metropole, yeah, Metropole.
Metropole and Crescent and Clarissa and Crescent.
Yeah, and then we've got a problem up and, I've mentioned this like four times, over across from the St. Lauren to the, to the community church. People try to get across there too and they can't, they just get trampled. I mean, the cars just keep going, they don't let them cross. There should be a crosswalk right there. I don't, I, I don't know what that entails. I don't know if we do need to do a study to implement that, but if we need to, so be it because there's a hotel and there's a church. We need to be.
And a blind, and a blind.
We need to be pedestrian friendly right on that.
Anytime we put a crosswalk in, yes, we should study it.
Call it warrants. You have to put, you have to determine, state law says that when you put in crosswalks, you don't want to create a false sense of security. So sometimes when you, usually they'll use a warrant or they'll use overriding conditions. And if you do have a crosswalk then in an area where there's not the, they call them warrants, that you, you want to define it, you want to make sure it's visible, you want to make sure there's some warning device so people don't think it's safe and cross and get hit.
I see.
But could I just mention one of the thing that you said about the purpose of an intramorgans or the purpose of a moratorium if, and I, did I say that? I guess you said that.
I said it.
Yes. The purpose of that is to allow, what, what Mr. Greenlaw is saying, is to allow that time to do that study to evaluate it so that conditions that you may think are bad don't get worse. So that's, so it's, 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 and I think that was the theory before when, when the moratorium was proposed previously.
Because with that plan, we'd be inviting the community's input into workshops to talk about all the different elements of that plan.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank, thank you for that input, Mr. Greenlaw. That's all I have. Cindy, sorry, it was took so long.
No, that's okay.
Cindy said she had a bunch, so she wanted to be.
I just want to bring up a couple of my buddies from San Pedro over today. They wanted to know how much we charge for the bees to go on their lunch. We still have the bee stuff, guys, to do the contract to help keep the bees, eliminate some of the bees. Is that still going on?
Yes, sir, we do have a contract, but I've seen those bees, yes, we, in fact, I believe that what is, either has come to you or is coming to you from Israel's office is to increase the service, bee service, so that, so that there's more, there's more.
Protection or whatever.
More protection, less bees, yes.
It'll be interesting just to see if they're checking or putting out more stuff, because there seem to be a lot more.
They just met with her the other day, I saw.
Yes. Because there's a lot of people complaining everywhere you go. And just wanted that to be looked into if we can, make sure that they are putting out more.
I think they counted, the other day, they counted 3,000.
Did they?
They got 3,000.
Discos has been pretty horrific. It might make sense to have the organization that's doing our bee abatement come and actually address and talk to the council and the community, like where's the best place to put traps around your home, around areas, what types of things could you use to help remediate in your own private areas. And also, you know, so many different philosophies, trying to draw the bees away from where you are versus having, you know, traps right in the location where, you know, you don't want them to be. So I think it'd be valuable for the community, especially as how bad they are this year.
Pretty bad.
And they're just bad because of all the rain, and all the rain brought all, I mean, it's just the whole cycle. It's amazing.
The old timers used to say the fishing's getting better when they come by.
Right, yeah.
With that being said, the other thing was, a follow-up on the smoking areas, and who delegates and who moves the ashtrays from in front of the bar, in front of the hotel. Who is doing that? Are the city doing that? The city? Public works guys are doing that. Who determines that?
It wasn't public works guys. I think that's just actually the, either the owners of the businesses or the smokers themselves.
So do they have to come to the city to make sure it's okay to move that?
I think it's just happening.
Just happen. Okay.
Frankly, I mean, if it's in the city property, they needed a crosment permit.
Yeah.
Well, I think they're city planned.
Yeah, but their city smoke, their city ashtray, and the people are moving them because they don't want the smoke to go into their hotel, or they don't want them to come into the bar. So they move them down the street while slowly but surely they're taking them a little further down. And we just want to figure out who's in charge of moving them, or maybe the city could put them back. I don't know what the answer is.
Or we can anchor them.
But are we going to anchor them? But it would.
We can do all, if that's our desire, yes, we can do all of those things.
That would be great. At least look into it some more for me. I think we requested that last time. And that'd be it for me tonight.
Near Potem?
Been gone, just got back, nothing.
Okay. I will be going to the League of California Cities Installation Dinner on Wednesday, and in Artesia. And if we, and I don't know if I need to bring it up here, as we move forward with the concept of dog park, I don't know where we are when we got the report, I guess it's directed to Bob. What were we going to do about that letter?
It's being evaluated.
Okay.
Yeah, so the island company's evaluating the question about the relocated site and whether or not there are issues with the site.
Okay, there was issues of perhaps some lead contamination at Pitch and Pet, and that's an area we've kind of been discussing for dog park. So we want to make sure that everything is okay there and all of that. Okay. And I just want to say, I went to, I've been to Aqua Aerobics. I hope you can all see the difference twice already.
Absolutely.
And I'm just glowing. And so I'll be in a bikini shortly. No, but anyway, it's a, that's scary. Anyway, it is wonderful. It's for 55 and older. It's up at the Holiday Inn. I don't know how many we can fit in that pool, but Ally Nell is doing the class, and it's really wonderful. So if y'all want to participate, and it is free. So on Wednesdays and Fridays at 8:30. So, at Holiday Inn. Okay, thank you. That's all I have for the day.
My most important item is, I wanted to give a very public thank you to the Avalon Fire Department and all of our first responders in the community. This week has been a very busy week for the department. They would probably say that for them, it's just a given week in Avalon. But having been personally involved and then kind of hanging out the last week, yesterday, three major incidents within a two or a three hour period. I just can't say enough about how wonderfully I felt, not only as a member of the community, but having a personal situation and the care, the love, the texts, the phone calls, the genuine concern for us personally. And without talking out of turn, I'm going to say that Chief sent a message to me saying that, you know, it actually makes a difference when you're assisting someone who you know. You do feel something a little extra special in the situation. And, you know, that, of course, made me cry and all of that good stuff. But I just, you know, I want to point out that yesterday, when these guys were trying to handle a couple situations, there's, you know, there was the alarms blaring and people just looking at them and not letting them get down the road and do what they need to do. And, you know, it's really important for us to take those seriously and get out of the way. And when you hear a siren, it doesn't matter if you see a vehicle, stop, you know, get out of the way and let them do what they got to do, because it's most likely somebody's life is in their hands. And additionally, I want to give a shout-out to the hospital. I have, over the years, heard rumblings of, we need this machine and we need that machine. But the EKG machine that the hospital has allowed us to know within a matter of 15 minutes that we didn't have a life-threatening emergency on our hand, and saved us possibly $30,000 in a life flight over town. So, you know, sometimes we don't think about and we don't recognize things until they come to home. So what the hospital is doing is really great in bringing new equipment to our community and new health services that we haven't had in the past. So, you know, please, please think about that when you see the members of the hospital as well. For Dan Hunky, I just cannot walk down the street in the city of Avalon without somebody stopping me to tell me how much they love that float in the harbor. I have had so many conversations with the staff at the Chamber of Commerce even, and that is one of the number one values that people are talking about in the harbor. And I wanted to bring that forward as somebody who was a little worried about how that was going to be received. But it is, you know, Council Member Busciano's kids were asking to go down there at 10 o'clock last night and wanting to play on it. So it's, I mean, it's a huge boon to our summer community. So I just wanted to say that. I will be attending Gateway City's Council of Government Board and Transportation Committee meetings tomorrow. Would like to see if we, the city, somehow could look into either a camera system for the stairs that we built between the, next to the museum. At the very least, if we could look at maybe putting some no-smoking signs up along that stairwell. But there's been some uncomfortable activities, if you will. And, you know, I don't know the cost of camera systems and all of that, but it's, if we could maybe just look into it and see what that, if it's possible, what that might entail. The, I think Bob's probably going to give us an update on the Pebbley Beach Road emergency repairs. So I'll let you do that one. But the last one is, and may be a little bit unpopular, but is there a way, and City Manager, you may have some prior experience in this, is there a way that we could look into either ordinances or some sort of law where we have rent control on our books? I mean, we are at, housing is at, right now, today, the all-time crisis level. And, you know, I'm hearing from as close as my own kids looking for housing to, you know, other members of the community who are desperate for housing. And, you know, you've got studio apartments being rented at $1,600 that are, you know, less than acceptable living conditions. And people's rents are getting raised all the time because it is, well, I can, you know.
It's doubled. It's doubled in a year, just about.
Yeah. If, I know it's a crisis, so I'm going to charge more. And it's further creating this concern in the community that even people who have good jobs, two incomes, can't even afford, you know, comparable living conditions for family sizes. Is that, is it possible?
Cities, in my experience, and some, one of which, in Morgan Hill, they have, cities have the ability and authority to regulate rents based on criteria that are, that they can set up. I assume, I assume that there's general laws that govern that and structures, varying structures of how you do that. I know in Morgan Hill, it was done on the basis of mobile home units that existed. They just regulated parks. In some cities, they do it on another basis, on a broader basis. So certainly, it's something that we can, if that's the council's desire, we can look into and consult with legal team and see. I'm sure the League of Cities has a number of publications on it that would be just available and we can make it as an information sheet.
I think number of our, I think maybe 20 to 30% of our cities, now we're now at 45 cities, but I think 20 to 30% have a rent control.
So that's a real thing. You can really do that.
Absolutely. Santa Monica is the champion of that.
That's a good point. Great.
Well, I think to get the information to start, that should be interesting.
I'm sure Mrs. Busciano's dealing with that as well. Heard a lot about LA and their rent recently, so I'm sure you're getting some input on that.
Charging stations?
Oh.
Go for it.
Joe, I may call you back up here for a moment as well. What, an item of conversation that we had last night is looking at creating, or looking at developing a test location in the city of Avalon through your assistance with the AQMD in setting up a test site for charging stations for electric golf carts.
Yes.
Like possibly looking at a high concentration of homes that have electric golf carts and grant monies and.
Absolutely. As a governing board member, Mayor Garcia, you pointed me to the governing board of the Southern California Air Quality Management District, because the porch is in my backyard, and truly believe in the air quality is important for this entire region. But I would be more than happy to put city staff in front of AQMD staff to, I know, we hand out through a competitive process, a lot of grant monies for these types of programs. And that is something that, a few years ago, one of my first trips when I arrived here as a council member, I did notice the emissions from the golf carts. I experienced it even today. But I understand that with, you need the charging stations that are needed on the island to facilitate these electric carts. In addition, I believe, looking at technology that, you know, and Mayor Protem Olson and I had this discussion last night about the long haul. You need the tech, green technology, long-haul batteries that have extended battery life so that when visitors come to the island, you have the same amount of battery life as if you were to use a gas-powered golf cart. So I'd be more than happy to facilitate the introduction with our folks at AQMD.
Thank you so much, Councilmember.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right. Oral communications. This is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. It'd be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken. And so we have Southern California. Whoops. Go ahead, Vern. Thank you, Joe. Bye, Rosa.
Hi, I'm Vern Eltieri. I'm here representing live music in Avalon. And we have a permit for playing live music from 7:00 to 10:00 at Pete's Cafe. And most people show up about 8:30, 9:00, and about 10:00, all of a sudden, the music stops and people are in disbelief, mostly the tourists that come here and hear us. So we want to extend the time to 11:00 on a Saturday night there at that location.
How do we go about approaching this?
We would have to, you would have to schedule it, an item on the agenda, and then you could discuss. The council sets the rules, regulations on time. If you wish to entertain the idea of changing it, then you would do that by ordinance. And, but you would need to schedule it to give direction for us at a meeting, on a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, well.
Just want to extend the permit for one hour longer on a Saturday night.
Okay. Well, let me ask Scott a question. So, Scott, the question that was posed was, Mr. Eltieri wants to, he supports live music in Avalon. And he's thinking about expanding the, he would like to expand their permit from 10:00 to 11:00 on Saturday nights during the season that they play out there. Because most people show up probably about 9:00 or 9:30, and then the band stops at 10:00. Now, this is an establishment that serves food and just beer and wine, and they pretty much cater to the community.
They're open till 1:00 or 2:00.
Yes.
So this would be seasonal, or this would be not forever, all the time, it would be like seasonal, you mean, during a certain time of the year?
So my question is, is, yeah.
Is it possible?
Is it possible? Yeah. Is it possible to do? And would this include everybody if we expanded the ordinance? Can we just do it for that particular venue?
Well, you said zones on what you can do, all kinds of things, where dogs can be, where people can smoke, or where they can't smoke. So it would seem, just in general, that you have the regulatory power to say in certain areas, you can do certain kinds of things for certain periods of time. I mean, Scott will tell you what our specific provisions are.
Your specific provision deals with amplification after 10:00 in residential areas. So it would be a permit that you'd have to get amended through the planning commission. Unless I'm missing something, you could do that. It would only apply to that.
And I want to say that I do sing in his band from time to time, but there's no money exchange. I do it because I love music, and that's the way, the reason I do it.
Yeah, that would be interesting, because then you're talking about the Wrigley Plaza stage as well, probably, which is not residential. But I don't know how well-received that's going to be by the hotels that are there. What's that?
Chamber survey, but the concert came up yesterday.
Oh, did it? Which was, okay.
It is a Saturday night.
Well, the concerts are.
Resort.
They're probably 100, I don't know.
Anywhere else in the world, there wouldn't be a problem. But it seems to be a problem in LA County, right? That's what the deal is.
I understand, though. I did talk to Captain Hawking about this. I don't believe, even when you're playing, I don't, your DB levels are not excessive.
They're not.
Yeah, whatever, it's 120 feet or something.
Not like the concerts on Front Street.
Exactly. So I know you're keeping it down, but I know there's, yeah. I don't mind looking at it. I just think we have to figure out how to do it.
It has to go through its process.
It has to, yeah. You'd have to apply to the planning commission for an amendment to your CUP permit.
Okay, so.
Wait, do you have a, do you actually have a permit to play there?
Yes, we have a permit.
Oh, okay.
So, well, if he wants to come in, and we'll help him.
Help him through the process.
Process. We'll help with the process to bring it before the commission.
Yeah.
We'll just.
So does everybody that plays music come to get a permit?
No, no, no. That would be, we have our, we have our outdoor entertainment, and that is something that you go through the city manager to, but you can only do that up to 10:00. No.
Well, up to 10:00.
No, only in a residential area.
So every time a group comes to play on that stage, they are going, coming and getting a permit?
No, they usually get a special use, a special event permit for it. And we also have outdoor, we have a whole ordinance for outdoor entertainment.
Right.
So it just depends on which event it is, whether it's an event using a special event, or whether it's the outdoor entertainment.
Okay.
But in either case, both those permits are processed through the city manager.
Thank you. Thanks, Vern.
Hi, Adeline.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Madeline Young with Edison. So we're in the middle of summer when children are out of school, playing, and on vacation. And I just want to share some tips to help kids be safe around electricity. According to the Electrical Safety Foundation International, 2,400 children in the US are treated for injuries caused by electrical outlets each year, and nearly a third of parents with young children do not have their outlets childproof. So here are some house rules to discuss with your kids to help keep them safe around electricity. Never put fingers or objects in electrical outlets, and make sure to childproof them. Keep and use electrical appliances away from water. Dry your hands thoroughly before reaching for anything powered by electricity. Grasp the plug, not the cord, to remove a power cord from an outlet. Play far away from trees that are touching or near power lines. And always ask an adult when you need to use something that needs electricity. to use something that needs electricity. I do have a home inspection checklist that you can use with your children to go around the house to see, to make sure that your house is electrically safe for them. So, thank you. Nice to see you all.
Nice to see you too.
Wait a minute. You're not going to get away that live. We haven't seen you in a while. So can you take this question back to headquarters?
Sure.
I'm curious. How many water restrictors have been removed?
Okay.
If they've started that process, and if so, how, how many have been removed? And how's that going? And then I asked you that other question the other day about the solar, and you were going to be getting back with us?
Yes.
Yes.
And then I'd like to ask, like, you were mentioning Prop 1 when we were doing an exchange of conversation the other day. I'd like to know when those, that money will be allocated, and when we know that we're going to get it or not get it.
So the Prop 1 application submission deadline is September the 1st, and that's when we will be submitting the application.
Okay.
So after that...
What do you think?
I don't know. Maybe Scott might know how long it would take.
Scott, a month, two months?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh.
Months, if not a year. They're going to have to...
So there'll be nothing done with our water for that long, at least?
Not for the next year.
Let's see if we don't, let's say we don't get the money. Where are we? What do we do? What's our backup plan?
Well, it's maybe that the ratepayers just pay for it more.
Oh, okay. $19 million?
Well, okay.
No.
Well, I do, I do want to share with the council that we, we did receive $100,000 from the United States Bureau of Reclamation for a drought contingency plan. So we will be working on that. There is a equal match from Edison, so it's a total of 200,000. So 100,000 from reclamation, and then 100,000 that we're going to be put in with in-kind donations. So we will be looking and working on a drought contingency plan. So that's one thing we are doing. But we're very optimistic about the Prop 1 grants, and I know with the support of the city and other stakeholders, from what I'm hearing from Scott, we have a very good shot at it. So...
Oh, really?
Yeah, we named it.
And also, and also, they have applied for other funds through the US Bureau of Reclamation. I don't know that you've yet heard back from them, but...
We have heard from one. Unfortunately, we did not get the grant, and that was for storage. The other one, which, actually, you know why I take that back? I think, let me get back to you. But, but I know that one of them, I believe we did not get the grant for, and that was for our SCADA.
Oh, you didn't get this?
I don't believe we did. But I will confirm with, with you and let the city manager know so that he can share it with you. But we did get one, so that's good. I always like to look at the glass half full.
Yeah, very good, Dan. Moving forward. I'm glad to hear that.
Okay. Yes.
Mayor, council. I just wanted to let you know, the conservancy was very happy on July 22nd to celebrate 45 years since we were established. We try to do good things for the island. We try to be a community member. And we had a wonderful year of wildflowers. We had a great year of the animal flora and fauna on the island doing great. And we've had what seems to be one of our biggest year for visitors, both in the camps, on the trails, with the expansion of our trail program. And we're feeling pretty good about how the island's going this year. And, you know, I know water is always a topic, but it's, it was a good year for water, and the reservoir still looks great up there. So I just wanted to remind you that we've been here on the island doing our thing for about 45 years now. So thank you for the O'Field and Wrigley family for their original gift, and that was it.
Oh, and you're building some nice bathrooms up at Hay Press.
Bathrooms are in process. We have five coming together, the closest one to town at Hay Press. And it should be opening, you know, everything should be done in the next two months, but we should have at least three of them open by the end of August. So that'll be a great help to the island. And the bush won't be the only spot to use for respite in our future.
Well, are they, so they'll have to be septic'd out, or, I mean, is it a tank?
They'll be pumped out.
We're bidding right now with a contractor, and yes, they are a pumped facility. And then we'll go out there and service them every few days just to keep them clean and tidy. But great help to the island.
Yeah, they look nice. Yeah.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Can I ask you about the buffalo? What, are we, are they going to keep inoculating them with birth control? Is there, are we ever going to see any more calves out there?
So it's a good question. We have not given birth control this year. We did not give birth control last year. So we have the combination of sort of science working with nature. And the drought has definitely curtailed bison having babies. That is very typical. That happens all over the United States. So this is really the first year we're going to know whether the contraception, how long it takes to get out of the system, how active the bison are. They have, they have good possibilities of births in our future. We don't see any reason why they wouldn't. We have, of our 120 that are living on the land right now, we probably have 50 cows that are capable of giving birth and are in the right age and health. They seem, because of the great greening of the island, they're all looking pretty good this year. So we are feeling good. And we definitely saw that explosion in deer. We saw that explosion in fox, and we expect the bison to follow.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a nice update. Thank you.
That's wonderful.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. 11 more years for me to get my security outfit out for the Olympics. Is that where I'm at?
Yeah.
I, I was a security guard for the 84 Olympics. On Santa Barbara, we hosted the crew teams up to Lake, Lake Aceta. So it was a lot of fun. Great memories. Don't have anything on the agenda. I just want to give a couple of quick updates on some of the things that we've been doing this summer, and then some new programs, which one of them's been touched on. But thank you for the support of the Avalon Kids Camp, the summer camp. We're running 20 to 30 kids, otherwise it wouldn't have those services a day. And just, the program's been great. Staff has been fantastic. We took some of the ISIS staff, a couple of those, and we have a couple of the high school students working with us to complete the staffing for it. We started with the flag week. We had Olympic week. We had a My Island Week, a community week. They've gone to the fire department. They've gone to the sheriff's department. They've done trash cleanups. They're having some fun. They're up in the hills. They're hiking. The conservancy has been fantastic, and their staff, and working with them once a week. We're up at the gymnasium twice a week, down at the beach three days a week. But the feedback that we've got, it's been fantastic. And I just wanted to thank you for support on that. Our youth sports programs are kind of wrapping up. I think tonight, we're probably in our finals, our last final game for the youth basketball. We completed our adult programs last week, and then Dave held a barbecue for about 50 of the basketball, adult basketball, men's and women's teams up at Joe Machado last night. It's just a celebration at the end of the season. Gave out awards for that. A couple of new programs that we've got going, one was touched on, the water aerobics. It's been a great start. Ally's doing a fabulous job. The Holiday Inn is super supportive and, and giving us the amenity, the pool amenity up there. And it's something we want to try and carry through September, and then build on that as we go into our fall program and probably bring that back in-house. But that's, as we said, Wednesdays and Fridays. I got a phone call today, somebody asking about it, and it's from 8:30 to 9:30 at the Holiday Inn. We had a handful of gentlemen come to us about a week ago, it's about two weeks ago now, looking for pickleball. And so we kind of scratched their brains a little bit on where we could try some pickleball as, it's an up and coming sport. We opted as a temporary site to put a temporary court on the skate park, at the skate park. A corner of the skate park has been striped for pickleball. There's a net. It's kind of fenced in. There were six of them that played for three or four days. And it was really cute that following, they played on a Friday. That following Monday, we made paddles available up at the front desk. We had two little local girls come in with their mom and got to play a little bit that afternoon. I was out walking my dog last night and got to see, there's a family of four playing tennis, just kind of a short court tennis on the, on the, I mean, three minutes up? Is that where we're going? The outrigger program, we're kind of finishing up our season. We had a month or so to go. We've got Dana Point Race. We're doing nine-man changeouts. And then we've got two teams going there. And we're going to finish up with two or three teams doing the channel crossing. And the last one is, we're going to bring back the back-to-school beach party, which was a hit last year. It's August 28th. We'll have kayaks and canoes. We'll do stuff on the inflatables. I'm getting pushed by a gentleman at Vons, I think y'all knew him, to do a Lego competition building. So we'll incorporate that in, just have a lot of fun. So that would be 3 to 7 on August 28th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good start. Okay, anybody else? Okay, to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Item one.
Go ahead.
Item one is to approve actions from the July 18, 2017 regular city council meeting. Item number two is to adopt an ordinance amending Section 3-2.103A of the Avalon Municipal Code to extend the due date for the Chamber of Commerce to present its audited report. And it is recommended that, that, well, there is, you, you have the amendment. I don't have to read the amendment. Item number three is the lower unit for, lower unit for the Evanrude E-Tech 150 horsepower outboard engine. The recommended action is to award the bid to Avalon Boat Stand for one replacement lower unit for an Evanrude 150 horsepower E-Tech outboard engine in an amount of $5,432.3. Item number four is to authorize expenditure for mold remediation in harbor floats. This is an important activity to get the floats in, that we have to get done. We recommend that you authorize expenditure not to exceed $10,000 for the remediation of mold in the harbor floats. Item number five is a request to approve an electronic communications policy in accordance with the City of San Jose versus Superior Court, California Supreme Court case. The recommended action is to adopt the electronic communications policy in response to a recent Supreme Court case as, and so that we are ensuring that we're in compliance. Item number six is approve a letter to President Trump regarding deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA, and authorize mayor to sign saying, we recommend that you approve the letter, of which you have a copy, with copies going to the state's elected leaders and your elected leaders also. And I believe, so, the next item, you're actually acting as the housing authority. It's to extend the deadline to, I know, I'll be quiet in a minute, Scott. It's to extend the deadline to develop or dispose of former Avalon Community Improvement Housing, Former Avalon Community Improvement Agency housing assets pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34176.1E. And the recommendation of the city attorney's office is that they adopt a housing resolution extending the period of development of disposition of housing authority properties transferred from the former Avalon Community Improvement Agency pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34176.1E. And I believe that is the, oh, yes, that's, those are the items on consent.
And item number one, we don't have, so we would be pulling that one.
So you would hold that over. Yes, ma'am.
I'd entertain a motion to approve items two through seven.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I have to look, too.
We have a contest about what time we're getting out of here today, and I really hate to be the one to slow down, because my time is probably sooner than anybody else's. But just, just a comment. On the thing for the housing, I know that doing that for five years is good, but as a council, we need to deal with that housing. That's all I want to say. Okay.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed, opponent.
Call for the vote.
Vote is 5-0, in favor.
Hey.
Pardon?
Oh, I didn't ask you that. Public, I'm sorry. We can call back the vote if you have comments that would make us change our vote. Okay.
Okay. Item eight?
Item eight.
Okay. So this is intended to be an update for the sedimentation analysis for the Avalon Harbor and the problem we're having with losing the sand on the beach. And the intent was, by the schedule that we were given by the consultant, that we were supposed to be delivering a draft report today. And that didn't happen. The consultant is a month behind. And that was disappointing news that both the city manager and I conveyed to the consultant. But I'm here to give you some information, just some tidbits to get you up to date, to get you thinking about it. So our expectations within a month from here that we'll actually be giving that draft report and suggest remediation on that.
Will there be a representative from that company here?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the representatives is Dr. Jenkins.
No relationship.
No relationship. But he is the PhD. And one of the things, speaking for the consultant here, when they put this scheduled together, and it started back in November, that was prior to the January events, and that Michael Baker and this expert, the PhD, is actually doing work all the way down the Southern California coast. And so since we had that damage and loss of sediment in other areas along our coast, he's very busy at this point. So it's really that they're not paying, it's not that they're not paying attention to us. It's because he's a very busy, and he is the person that we'd like to listen to what, you know, he's, the work he's done. So wait, wait a month here, and we should get some good results. But just to give you an indication of what they've been working on, so the consultant built a 3D CAD model of the Avalon Harbor, the breakwater, and the surrounding coastline, and extending out into the deep water where the closure depth is reached, where they set a depth of negative 300 meters deep. So they set up the model. And the CAD model is a computational grid for both the wave refraction, diffraction, and sediment transport models. The CAD model is populated with the following inputs. So the deep water and, and outer harbor bathymetry, and also the inner harbor bathymetry, and the harbor breakwater layout. And then they also included modeling, which is important, the concrete sheet pile groin, which was under the pier. And that was previously unknown in other studies. This groin was found as they did the, the studies underneath the water, they found this. And so, and it turns out that this is a critical feature in the sediment, sediment transport analysis. So, and then also, they looked at the sediment grain distributions on the beaches and in the inner harbor from a sampling survey. So they, then they performed refraction, diffraction, and trap mode wave analysis of the Avalon Harbor using historic wave inputs from the Coastal Data Information Program. And then they determined that the extreme historic wave events cause erosion of the beaches as the waves reflect off the seawall. But the net result of this is simply to winnow out the finer grain size fractions from the beach sediment, and then deposit them in the inner harbor at depths of 8 to 20 feet. So it's out there still.
So the sand is in the harbor.
It's in the harbor.
It's in the harbor, just not on the beach. So that's okay.
Yes. So then the consultant performed a prop wash sediment transport analysis, and they had been aided in this analysis by the discovery of a key data set that was unknown to when they wrote the, when they wrote the proposal. And they found that direct measurements of currents induced by the Catalina Express and a water quality study prepared for the City of Avalon by Professor Stanley Grant of UC Irvine. Grant and his team installed an ADCP current near, near the Catalina Express docks. When we embed a current source in the harbor CAD model that they built that I discussed previously, at the location of the UC Irvine ADCP mooring site, the model computes a large cyclonic eddy that is set up against, in the harbor, that flows clockwise around the harbor, following the harbor seawall. And because the harbor seawall forms approximately a 290-degree arc, the centrifugal accelerations in this eddy are the strongest, they're, cause the strongest circulation to be directed adjacent to the face of the seawall. So the wave and prop wash mechanisms work together in the following way. When large waves leak into the harbor while the Catalina Express is birthed and running its engines in reverse to hold station against the high sea states, wave reflection off the seawall resuspends the beach sediment in a turbid cloud, which you see out there. When you actually, you know, behind there, you see the difference in color.
So that's churning the stuff up, and it's moving it.
Yeah. And the prop-induced cyclonic circulation causes that cloud of suspended sediment to drift clockwise along the face of the seawall. There are no beach deposits updrift of South Beach, and the wave-suspended South Beach sediment drifts toward Middle Beach. These sediments, along with the waves of sediments from Middle Beach, would continue to drift. These sediments, along with the waves, sediments from Middle Beach, would continue to drift along the face of seawall toward the casino if not for the concrete sheet pile groin under the pier. As with all groins, this groin creates a depositional template leading to the build out of Middle Beach over time and the progressive showing that is occurring under the pier. So if you stand right on the pier, you know, and as I talked to Jay about what's happened over time there, you could see it right down there, it's right at the end of that groin and then it goes all the way back to the seawall in a triangle. So then the consultant is presently still on that task four that I said about a month ago, formulating remedial measures to test the model. Interactive discussions with the City of Avalon before we commit too much time to any particular remedial approach. So that's what they're going to come in when they give us that draft report. They're going to just present that report and then suggest some remedial actions and then they're looking for direction from the city so they don't burn up a whole bunch of time working on this, okay?
That's great.
So for example, when we stop the present erosion cycle by having the Catalina Express stop the present practice of running its engine in reverse while it tied up the dock or have it anchor offshore between offloading and offloading passengers. Some of those things don't probably sound too popular, but those are some of the things we talk about. Alternatively, we could build a deflection wall. So like as they were previously, when you see that seaplane on the beach from back when, there was baffle walls, groins, and they're saying, we can build some more of those.
Because weren't there, was there three?
Three, and it almost looks like there was a fourth.
Was a fourth, yeah. So they could, that's one of the options then is to replace those, those walls to catch the sand.
The baffle would deflect the prop wash back into the middle of the harbor rather than allowing it to spin up like a water wheel, the present large cyclonic eddy that follows the seawall like a bend in the river. There is prior evidence that this approach would be successful as there is no erosion problem on South Beach while the old baffle at the mouth of creek had stood. And so, but also when you talk to some people like Jay, who'd been here for a while and he's been watching that, all that happen, and that's something that we need to discuss some of these things with, that, what the consultant's coming up with, you know? Because he's been here watching it every day.
Yeah, I've talked to him too.
Bob, I don't mean to, I just, just for clarity, so what the consultant will be modeling then solutions and saying, look at this, if you build these baffle walls, as you call them, that, that, here's what would happen, it would maybe start redepositing or?
Yes, and let me finish up here.
Okay.
Okay? So there's prior evidence of it and then, I'm almost done here. However, neither of these approaches will undo the erosion that has already occurred on South Beach. The only way to accomplish that would be install a motorized back passing system that would utilize a jet pump to excavate the shoal that has formed under the pier and return those sediments back to South Beach, or a small suction dredge like you see in other harbors that could be dredged, barged over to the mainland and we move that material back on the beach after we installed the baffle walls wherever the model said. So those are some of the snapshots that we'll be talking about. Maybe you can, you can ponder on that a little bit and, and be prepared for the questions. Okay?
Well, there's a solution, is the good thing.
Okay. So that's our report, is there any questions on that?
No.
Okay, and then I just, while I have a little bit of time here, just give you a brief update on some CIP things that are happening.
Okay.
So the 2016 CIP project, we've got all the saltwater valves complete, we have all the sewer manholes complete, we have the new electrical panels at Pebbley Beach Lift Station and also the Catherine Way Booster Station complete. We're currently working on improvements to the Hill Street Booster Station for saltwater and also the Whitley Booster Station for water. So those will all have redundant pumps, good new piping, we actually went down, the plans that showed just to take off down to the rusted piece of skid that all this equipment was attached to, we took out the whole slab of the booster station and just started from new there. So this thing should look like a municipal facility that has redundant pumps and has a pump on the shelf, so we shouldn't be getting the saltwater booster stations going down, okay? So we're bringing that up to speed. And the paving has been postponed until after Labor Day and that was for public convenience. And so that was not the contract, we asked the contractor if he would postpone that because when we started laying out what that paving would look like, it was like we would have a minefield, if you just imagine a street and the flats with 10 holes with plates on it one day, next day we'd become back paving, we'd tell people you can't park, there'd be debris, so we just said, this is better done after Labor Day, okay? So and the contractor agreed to that for no cost. Okay, so that was good news. Casino Way Restrooms, so the presentation for, so next council meeting we'll have the presentation of plans for approval in front of you, so you'll see those concepts. But also with that, since we're doing such a large project, it's at the level, we need to make it ADA compliant all the way through the walkways. So I'll also be presenting, to be able to comply with that, the easiest way is to put what is a speed table and that's something the island hasn't seen and it's a traffic calming measure that would actually make a race crosswalk at that crossing, okay? So what that does is it slows the speed, makes a very pedestrian-friendly area there and gives them their space, but slows the vehicles down to, maybe a golf cart wouldn't even realize it because when I've installed those over on the mainland, they're intended to be a speed because there are large undulation of about 22 miles an hour. So really what it does is it just gives you that visual, you got to slow down, but doesn't give you that jarring bump. And I'll present all that information to you so you can ponder on that if that's the way we want to go. If not, we'll find another solution to get the ADA. But what that does is it does a couple of things at once, gives us ADA compliance but also puts in that traffic calming measure that I think maybe we're talking about.
Yeah, pedestrian-friendly, we want to be a little more, yeah, for sure. I like that.
Okay, so then the cemetery expansion, the excavation's completed and we're getting pricing on the topsoil that will be brought in so we can put the sod in. But we did find the foundation of the old jail, four feet down, and we did encounter contaminated soil right behind that slab. There must have been an old diesel fuel tank down there, so they're about a 10 by 10 by two foot deep spot that we had to take and remediate, you know, get that soil shipped out, okay? So the good news is, is that we went down and excavated eight feet down that entire site. We're now assured that we can have burials across that whole site. So that was money well spent because otherwise we would have been hitting that slab in about a quarter of the site. Okay, just hang on here, I'm almost done. The mole, we're currently working on the engineering for the substructure rehabilitation, that's phase one, and so it's estimated the construction start on that is October 2018 with completion in April 2019. Of course, that has a lot of permitting involved and that's why it's not that the engineering takes that long, it's all the steps that go with that. And so, and that doesn't mean that we'll start phase two after that, we start kicking phase two in, which is the top side of that here while we're working on that engineering, okay? So a lot of things coming, a lot of public input needed on that. And so the Pebbley Beach Road damage, we did see some other damage when we had that surge a couple of weeks ago and we had two new sink holes, well, the expansion of some sink holes. So we, Public Works crews went in there, cleaned those out, new rocks came in and then we, what we do is we usually grout those in. And so you saw an extended period, probably eight days or when this happened. It didn't take us that long to do that. What occurred was the concrete plant went down. So in the, so there was no concrete available from a mixer truck on the island, so we were first up, Jim got us mixed, you know, first up when he had it up, back up and running, but that's why, that's why you saw it, that extended duration on that. We are working for additional funding for storm damage on that, so from this January event, we think we're going to be in the range of getting another $150,000 for damage that was increased from the 2014 damage. And then we'll be, we're setting up the engineering so we can go out to construction on that in the near future for those repairs. But then we're looking long-term is, okay, what do we do with the rockfall, what do we do to increase the protection on the revetment? And there's several sources of funding on that. So you have the Hazard Mitigation Program out of FEMA that could provide so that we don't get repetitive damage. We could get the Active Transportation Program that could help extend that revetment out and why? Because we want to see a larger shoulder for all users out there. We have the safety funds that are available from FHWA, so both for the rockfall and the revetment damage so that we don't lose our road. Those are all well-funded programs. And so what we're doing on the big picture is setting up, it's like getting that engineering done for the fix on the storm damage, is setting up to get the funding on those others. So putting that picture there, getting the engineering, preliminary engineering done on that, so when we're doing the repair here, it's actually setting us up for those next projects so we can move on and go out there and capture that funding. Okay, so big picture, it should be where you have that walkway extending out there, you should have a very thick revetment and you should potentially have that screening, that netting, you know, on about half of that, all funded here, okay? So that's what we're working on.
Yes.
Bob, I also, I meant to send, I took some photos yesterday, I meant to send them to you and so I will, but along the wall, if you're at the, if you're parked at the mole to go do anything, all along that wall there, there's a couple holes that you can clearly see that something is, is missing down below. Is that, has that been looked at? Have you guys?
Yes, Public Works is actually going to be addressing that this next week.
Oh, perfect.
Okay, so we've, yeah, we're on it.
Perfect.
Did Mike Flynn finish putting those things in?
Bob, thank you, that was great. Good work, man.
You mean Mr. Flynn's?
What are those flapper valves that were supposed to go in on front?
Flappers, where are the flappers? And we're not talking about the 20s.
The storm, those flapper things Mike Flynn was going to install so that all the saltwater wouldn't go back on?
Yeah, I still need to have a discussion with him on that because those are not, you need to, as far as the head pressure on it, it doesn't work.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Those don't work, they need to be redone to something that has less pressure to open them up.
Oh, okay.
So that, you know, okay?
Dang, I do, it sounded really good. So, thank you. Okay.
Are we going to do the hospital before we go?
We do have a hospital.
I know.
Hospital.
And that's all.
Hospital.
She did a good job.
For the record, all the trustees are here.
We are? Oh, that's right. I'd like to call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting Tuesday, August 1st. Call to order. Call to order. Roll call.
Trustee Sampson.
Here.
Trustee Cassidy.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez.
There.
Chair Olson.
Here.
And trustee?
Vice chair.
Yes, Marshall.
Here.
Thank you. Any announcements?
I have none.
Okay. Any written communication?
We have none.
None.
None?
Cool. Presentations, none. Oral communication, the board of trustees will accept comments from the public at this time, no actual be taken on non-agenda items at this meeting. Speakers should limit their comments to three minutes each. And they're rushing to the podium, just absolutely, stay down there, Jim. Okay, consent calendar.
You have, did you want to read that, sir? Do you want to?
You can read it, it's fine.
Okay. We have a consent calendar, item one is to approve the July 18, 2017 Board of Trustees actions. Item number two is to recommend two directors to the Avalon Medical Development Corporation Board. The recommended action is to approve the two members, the board members who are advertised and two applications were received from Michael Ponce and Katrina Awalt.
Does anybody want to remove any of the consent items?
Nope.
Entertain a motion on the consent?
I make a motion and reapprove items one and two on consent.
I, I second that motion.
I think the way I was reading it, do we actually need to recommend Michael Ponce and Katrina Awalt? Does it need to be, does it specifically?
My understanding is that you appoint the board.
You appoint.
You appoint, yeah.
You appoint, okay.
I will be abstaining from item number one as I was not here. So any comment from the public?
Mr., Mr. President, may I just add one thing that I would like to express my appreciation to, to the hospital CEO, Jason Parry, for his collaboration with us on the issue of THIPA and, and about the efforts that collectively some of you individually are making, we are making, our employees are making to, to gain a more equitable reimbursement rate for HMO holders in the city and on the island and he's been very collaborative and we're engaged and I appreciate that and wanted to mention it.
Cool. Comment from the public? No comments, call for question.
All in favor, 5-0.
Perfect. General business, there's none. Chair has no report, members report?
None.
Or adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, would you please tell Ms. Ratty that I did at least okay because otherwise I don't want to.
We're not done yet.
Oh, we're not done?
We have a close session.
Well, I need for the other part. Okay, one close session, Amanda Cook versus the City of Avalon, I think this will take five minutes.
Okay, thank you all for coming and good night, Tony.
No report of action.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, thank you, Dudley.